All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. If you do not already have a seat, there's also seating in the balcony, so please feel free to grab one. Again, this is the Baltimore City Council Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Thank you for coming out this evening. So before getting one to introduce our colleagues and staff, so to my left, Councilman Chris Burnev, the 8th District, member of the committee. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, 14th District, thank you for coming. Councilman Z. Kona, the 1st District, member of the committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, the 3rd District, member of the committee. Councilman Bill Henry, member of the committee, 4th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District. We also have Vice Chair Councilman Yitzhak Slifer of the 5th District. We also have joined with us Kara Kunst and Paul Plymouth in the Council President's Office, as well as Richard Crummerich, who is the staff to the committee. I also want to thank the members of city agencies who have come out, as well as the Mayor's Office, so Kyron Banks in the Mayor's Office, thank you for joining us. We also have from Housing Sharon DeBoyne, we also Julie Day and Steve Janes, thanks for joining us. We also have Pedro Aponte from the Department of Finance, thanks for being here. Angel St. John from the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and also from Real Estate Walter Horton, so thank you for joining us this evening. This hearing today is on Resolution 170037, Dollar House Program for the 21st Century. This was something that was introduced by our colleague, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, and wanted to give her an opportunity to speak on it, but before we get going, you know, I know there's so much interest in this subject, which is demonstrated by the attendance that we have this evening. We know that vacancy and blight is a huge challenge in Baltimore City. We have thousands of vacant properties littering our city, and we have to be creative in our approach. And so, looking at some of the processes that we used in the past to revitalize neighborhoods, and how that can inform what we do moving forward. It's one of the reasons why myself and my colleagues unanimously co-sponsored this resolution. Today, however, is really an opportunity to investigate, to hear from our city agencies, and also to talk about what's feasible. There are many people advocating for this issue, but we also have some expertise, and we want to utilize the expertise in terms of fashioning a program, if there was such a thing, to see what would work in that regard. My colleagues, you should have a report from Housing available to you, but since you sponsored it, Councilwoman Clark, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few more than that. If I can, because I read the reports. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening to demonstrate what I hope is support for the, a dollar housing program for the 21st century, as a wonderful group of Baltimoreans who will be speaking have outlined to me. So it really is the same, but yet different, because it is of the 21st century, and it is of a group called HOMES, H-O-M-E-S, led by Tyrone Boast, star of screen and radio by this time, and well-deserved. The Dollar House Program began because we had a bunch of vacant houses back in the early 1970s here in Baltimore, and they were vacant and city-owned, because the, we were going to have a highway, and the highway got stopped by many people, including the Movement Against Destruction, I remember it well. And so, those houses were in the path now of a highway that never would be built, but they had been bought by the city, they were vacant, they were standing there empty. For example, they were in Otterbine. They were in Barry Circle, all right. So what the city did was create a dollar program, a Dollar House Program, and people entered a lottery to be one of the people to buy one of these houses for a dollar. Yes, to take title, it did cost $1. Let's back up to how you began, though, as an urban pioneer with the Dollar House Program. If you agreed that you wanted to buy a house for a dollar, there were low-interest rehab loans available. These are blighted vacant houses now. Nobody's going to let anyone move into with a use and occupancy that. It has to be fixed. It has to be brought up to code. And so, there was a low-interest loan, we had some from the federal government, but we used our own bond money to supplement that. There was a office, a small office created dedicated to the Dollar House Program. There were some architect engineering companies contracted, as needed, to work with the buyers when they needed design and engineering information for the rehab. And the loan was for the rehab itself, the reconstruction of the houses, bringing them up to livable conditions. No one ever defaulted on that loan in that program. So now, and then it ended. We ran out of highways, we ran out of clusters of vacant houses for a minute, and in that minute, someone blinked, it went away. But lately, in this century, almost everywhere I go, someone will walk up to me and say to me, "Hey, Mary, whatever happened to that Dollar House Program?" And oftentimes, that will be a person when I'm talking to, when I'm in a neighborhood that does have blighted properties, that is really saying, "How can my neighbors and I be part of that for this neighborhood?" And so, when Tyrone Boast invited me to Terra Cafe, the great meeting place of Baltimore City, where everything gets hatched, I had a chance to meet with him, he's a, he's a construction expert, he's got his license in plumbing, HVAC and the like, he's now retired, he'll tell you about himself. And, no, I just, I'm almost done, but I just do want to, I do want to take this moment to give the framework, because I know our agencies are less than enthusiastic, but it's probably because they don't feel, as I do feel, that Baltimore wants to fix itself, that we want to fix us. And this is one way everyone understands we can do it. And it's not as grand and glorious as a multi-acre development that goes 20 stories high. And that's fine if it's what the neighborhood wanted, that's good, but that's brought to us. We want to rebuild us with our own companies, construction groups, with our own young people, and returning people being, learning the trade on those sites, with our own neighbors of the blighted areas, who want the chance to buy a home that might cost a few hundred dollars in mortgage and repaying the loan for a while, but they're paying 900 to rent a junky. Thank you. So, thank you. So what this is about is hearing what the agencies have to say, and knowing that they care and are doing a lot, and they have to get used to this new idea of an old program for the 21st century. And we will help them, and we will help us all find our way to building, rebuilding Baltimore ourselves, in great part. Thank you.
So, thank you, Councilwoman Clark, for bringing this to the table. You know, we all recognize that as Baltimoreans, we all have a role to play in the revitalization of our city, but I do want to also utilize expertise of our city agencies, who have thought long and hard about some of these issues that face us. And so, that being the case, I would like to turn it over to Housing to have some commentary as well. We do have your comments, but I definitely want to hear from Housing. Our good friend Julie Day, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
You're a star.
I've never gotten applause here before, I love it. You can have a half.
You deserve a half.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Co-Chair, Councilwoman Clark and other members, my councilmen. For the record, my name is Julie Day. I am currently the Acting Chief of Staff for Baltimore City's Department of Housing and Community Development, and I think most pertinent to the conversation we're having here this evening, for the last, the best part of the last decade, I have been the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Housing, managing the Land Resources Division, and it was our staff in Land Resources that's responsible for the acquisition of properties, but also the disposition of properties in furtherance of neighborhood revitalization. So we have a marketing team, we have a staff that works really diligently out in the communities and runs workshops, so that if you come in to buy a property, how do you buy? How do you get the permits? How do you, how do you get a 203K loan? How do you do all the things? Because if you come to us and you want to buy a city property, we want you to succeed, and we want your neighbors to not have to have that property languish any longer, so we don't want to, we want to do what we can to make sure we sell it to the people who will succeed. The Dollar House Program is a fascinating idea, it was a fabulous idea, and, you know, I really want to start by thanking you for your continued interest, and I think it really is a testament to how much we all care about our neighborhoods, because we all recognize that blight and abandonment and vacant properties is such a problem, that we all just really need to keep thinking about how to do the work better, make the neighborhoods change faster. And particularly with the Mayor Pugh administration, she wants to be known as the Mayor of Neighborhoods, she's committed to that. And with Commissioner Braverman newly appointed, you know, change, we're looking at things new, and looking at old things, and trying to do things differently as well. So I welcome the opportunity, you know, to kind of harness this energy and these ideas, at the same time, being cognizant of what we've tried to cobble together, particularly in the last few years, as we've done Vacants to Value, there are a lot of tools to bring to bear that, you know, would supplement Dollar Houses. And I would say that, as Councilwoman Bullock mentioned, to be pragmatic about what we do propose, what can be done. The Dollar House Program existed at a time of generous federal funding, which we all know woefully lacking at this point in our trajectory with, with the way Congress and the federal government looks at urban policy and issues, we're at a real deficit. We also had an organization within HCD called Rehab Express. There were close to 100 employees that kind of held the hands of the people who bought the Dollar Houses. We don't have 100 employees. The other thing that I would note, and maybe this is, you know, this is something that I need to work with our staff on doing better, is getting the word out about what the possibilities are and what the options are. And I will say that we sell properties for a dollar all the time. We have given properties away. I will give you an example that, you know, in, actually in your district, Councilwoman Clark, it was in Remington, we had a row of, I can't remember, it was eight or 10 contiguous...
It was nine.
Nine, okay, eight or 10, nine. We had the properties valued at $4,500 apiece. We wanted to encourage homeownership rather than a tenant in the property, so we told the developer that if you rehab the property and you put a homeowner in there, we will credit you the $4,500 sale price. If you put a tenant in there, you pay us $4,500 for the house. We got nine homeowners on that block, and that developer paid us zero for nine properties. So it can be done, because our commitment really is that the price of the house, the acquisition cost of a property, should not be the impediment to rehab. So we will continue to work with you on ideas, we'll work with community members who are also interested in this important issue on ideas, but it's going to be, you know, we'll look to capital funding as well. And as you watch the transactions that are coming on the Board of Estimates in the next couple of weeks, we have a dollar transaction going next week, 31 South Payson Street, long vacant surplus library, not even just a row house, but a library, because we want that property rehabbed, and our contribution to that deal is often the value of the property. So, I would be happy to take any questions, or...
Sure, I know I have some, but also Vice Chair Slifer?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Day. Can you talk about a little other things that we can do to support these people who are rehabbing these homes? I know you guys have taken your permitting system online, which has been very successful in helping small companies get their permits and expedite that process, but what could we do on top of just providing a home for a dollar or free to these people to rehab them? Is there ways we can waive all permitting fees, waive other things, so that we're really getting people in there to renovate these homes in a timely manner, and they're incentivized to do so?
Thank you, sir. A couple of ideas. I would encourage people to take advantage still, as our website is Vacants to Value. We have, you know, many properties listed for sale on there now. We have a resource center in the Benton Building, 417 East Fayette Street, on the 10th floor. You can come in anytime during business hours, and we have staff that will meet with you to help you identify kind of where you want to rehab, where you want to invest, what your capacity is. What we find, a lot of people come in and they want to buy 20 properties, and we're like, "Well, why don't you start with one?" You know, and then the next year, they do two or three, and some of, some of the people that were new to us just three or four years ago are now doing a dozen at a time. So I think working with our staff, and I would really encourage attendance at the workshops that we've, we hold, I think it does give you a good foundation on how to get the work done. I would also say that the developers in this town, and it might be because we do have so much opportunity and so many vacant buildings, but they are just really generous with their time and experience. It's almost like it's an open source industry here. People will answer questions, meet with you, talk with you, and really help you get up to... I mean, everybody hits a glitch in a road, you know, a hump in the road while you're rehabbing a property. I always say, "Alls you got to do," you know, "Alls you got to do is fix that one lightbulb, and next thing you know, you've replaced the electrical system." You know, because you always find something behind the next wall, but there's somebody out there working already that has been behind that wall and can help guide you. And we have, you know, networking events, so new investors can meet experienced investors. We really try to make sure, I don't want, we want to do what we can to get rid of the vacancies as much as we can, as quickly as we can, but I don't want to set anybody up for failure either. So that's kind of, you know, the balancing act that we're trying to get through.
And I have a bit of a follow-up to that. So, even to the answer that you gave previously, you mentioned, you know, nine or 10 houses, and it speaks to the whole block strategy that Housing seems to be wanting to employ in trying to turn around these blocks. So, one, could you talk about that to some degree, because there may be a challenge in terms of having one or two being parceled out? The other thing to talk about, why, what makes those properties that you sold for a dollar, what makes that process successful as opposed to, as opposed to others? Because I know there's also the rehab cost, it's not just the acquisition of the building, but the cost in terms of rehab. Could you talk to some of those issues?
Sure. The, we certainly strive for a whole block outcome. And as we all know and love our town of row houses, we know that there are very, in some neighborhoods, there are few blocks that are fully occupied, and, but there are no few blocks that are solely wholly vacant either. So, part of what we've done over the years is to come up with a strategy for each block, whether it's through the disposition of properties, whether it's receivership, where we have the court-appointed receiver for auction, but we want to do that on a block that has, you know, a chance of success, that there's a market there, that it's near an asset, like some of the 21st century schools, or you want to build around those, or if it's near, you know, the universities, or whatever the strength might be, and build out from that strength. One of the things that, you know, if you walk into our office and meet with our marketing people, and you pick a single vacant in a block that has 18 other vacants, we're going to steer you away from that. You know, we want you to go to a block that has one or two vacants, and then, now all of a sudden, there's a, there's the whole block back, and, you know, it's a vibrancy that isn't done piecemeal.
Thank you. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, sir.
Good, well, it's still kind of afternoon, technically, but good evening. I'll go do that. So what I was hoping to talk a little bit about was, you touched on the fact that the Dollar House Program originally took place in an era of greater federal generosity. And you also referenced that there was a rehab department...
Yes.
...inside HCD with 100 employees. Were those employees paid for out of federal dollars? And I'm looking for some specifics on what, what, what is the actual price tag to the city for running a Dollar House Program? What do we pay for...
Right.
...in terms of, admittedly, it may be harder now for people to, who are trying to rehab a house that they bought from us for a dollar, maybe harder for them to get loans. And that's something that's, you know, may or may not be entirely under our control. But what do we do, what do we have to do in order to actually offer a Dollar House Program?
Well, I would, I would say first, thank you, I would be remiss if I offered a fiscal note standing here.
Well, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that.
But I will say that Mr. Horton is here, and he was, you know, you know, I've been around a while, but this, the program actually does predate most of us, except Mr....
Except, except for Mr. Horton. But I, I, I'm not, I'm not looking for a dollar figure off of the top of...
Right.
Once said, what I'm looking for are, what are the things the city would have to, you know, where, where do we have to staff up? Where do we have to, you know, have a pot of money to do this? What were the, because, yeah, I mean, I, I grew up hearing great stories about the Dollar House Program, but, yeah, but, but I wasn't there to, like, look at the documents...
Right.
...to see, well, what did the city have to provide?
Well, it was a division of the Department of Housing and Community Development, which, if we go down this path, I would argue it should be again as well.
Sure.
But there were cost estimators, there were inspectors, there were real estate officers, what else, Mr. Horton?
Architects.
Loan officers.
You mean...
And I, and I would add...
Loan officers in terms of because the city was providing loans, or loan officers to help?
The city was providing loans, and then there was federal reporting and oversight as well. But, like, one thing I want to, I do, and Steve Janes is here with us this afternoon as well, and he, you know, he has been looking into us, into this for us, and, you know, we believe there were only about 180, we've come up with 183 houses that were sold through the program. So, it is a legendary program in many ways.
You mean, in terms of the perception of its...
Yes, yes.
...impact has exceeded?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
The legend of the Dollar Houses have grown.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that we...
That doesn't mean it wasn't a success, I'm not trying to, you know, be dismissive of it, because it was a tremendous opportunity, it was a tremendous program at the time, but it was not, you know, we sell, on average, about 150 vacant houses a year, we've been averaging that over the last several years, too.
So, I guess I'll leave it with this last question before we move on to others, is what, what would be involved in, I'm going to try to say this carefully, what would be involved in rebranding parts of the existing Vacants to Value Program as a Dollar House Program, where we literally only ask people to pay a dollar?
At this point, with the inventory that we have, and the negotiations that we do in the sales of these properties, I would consider it in large part to be a marketing effort.
Okay.
Okay? We don't have the capital right now to back it up, we don't have the mortgages, we don't have the staff, and we can talk about how much that might cost if we were to go to scale. But we have kind of kicked around the idea of it's Dollar House March in Mayfield, you know, and all the houses that we sell in Mayfield might be a dollar for a month, or, you know, just, but thinking of it more of a marketing thing, which is a different component, I see the consternation rising, the, but it's a different idea.
Yeah, that, that's, that's more like a sale.
But that's in the absence of capital, and, and as a complement to the other efforts that we have going on to eliminate blight. Yes, sir?
Right, because you're mentioning the capital piece in terms of the loans and everything else that would require...
The loans, right, that's right, I'm sorry.
...to actually make it come online.
So we figure that it costs about $100, maybe $120 per square foot to rehab a house. Okay, so, and our average house...
Laura to finish.
The average house, we think, is, you know, is probably about 1,200 square feet.
I do want to just mention this number again, because I think it's, it's important for clarity purpose. You mentioned, in the entirety of the Dollar House Program as it was in the '70s and '80s, we're talking about 183 houses total.
That's what we've come up with, that, it's like...
(inaudible) Times, sorry.
Well...
Who am I to contest the Times?
How about we, how about we do this? So we, so we know that the city has been able to identify 103, 183 houses. The New York Times may have mentioned 600. What I want to get at, though, is the magnitude of the vacant house issue we have in Baltimore now...
Right, absolutely.
...on a conservative estimate is 16,000.
Correct.
Just want to put that into perspective. Councilman Burnett has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, most of my questions have already been answered, so I'll keep it short. So I know one of the biggest challenges, and I think it's the reason we have so many people here today, is barriers to entry for small developers, for people, I've gotten calls from people on my block, I live, I live in a block with vacants, about acquiring those houses through the existing channels, and one of the biggest issues is access to capital. What are some ways that, and even talking to a few folks who I know personally that do work and have purchased and rehabbed properties, one of the challenges that they've said is that a small number of banks are willing to provide financing for these, for this type of work.
Right.
And so, it's kind of, becomes an area where, you know, small developers, upstart, folks who are, just care about their community, aren't able to get into the program, and large developers pretty much take the bulk share.
Right.
This is just, anecdotally, just speaking, just speaking anecdotally, I'm not a developer, and have not done a single one yet. So I guess the question is, what are some ways that the city, you know, Dollar House Program aside, what are some ways that the city can help bolster the lending market and make sure that, you know, we really work? If there are ways and strategies that we can really lower that bar with existing programs or the expiration of bringing back the Dollar House, either way, I think what we're really talking about is how do we allow for small companies, small developers, residents in the city to gain access and really, you know, take control of properties and get them back on the market? I know it's a tough question.
I appreciate the question, and it's something that we think about all the time, because we recognize that the credit and the available funding to do this work is the real impediment, and not the price of the house. And they just get conflated into a point where we can come together with the enthusiasm and the ideas to try to come up with a solution. I would say that, you know, we work closely with banks to try to give them assurance that the housing department works with the buyers and has other tools to see that, you know, as Councilman Bullock mentioned, the whole block outcome is something that does give lenders, you know, some surety that the work is going to get done and encourages investment. Baltimore Community Lending, you know, was, has really stepped up of late and is really trying to... trying to work with new developers and new investors to try to get rehabs done. They're a good partner. We've worked with other banks, and it's, there are several groups out there now that are setting up, like, mentorship programs where they've had success, and they have funding, and they're, you know, working with them on, and getting whole blocks, and having different developers do different houses along the block. So I, you know, again, we welcome ideas about how, that's, that's a macroeconomic issue that we're trying to solve, to really solve a micro neighborhood problem, you know, and that overlap is, it's a difficult spot to, you know, really navigate and come up with a good solution, but it's, it's one that we really just need to keep beating the drum on.
Okay. I know we have a lot of people that want to testify, so I'll just stop there. Thank you.
No, I appreciate Councilmember Burnett asking the question. Financing is really an important piece of it, and a lot of that has to do with even the value of the house, the potential market that it's in, and what a bank will lend, so I think those are all very serious issues. Councilwoman Clark?
One of the things the Dollar House program does, or did, is take, the loans that people were getting were not coming from banks.
Right.
They were coming from the federal, and very much from the city government bonds.
Mm-hmm.
So, so that we cut out the banks.
Right.
One. Secondly, to my colleagues' interest, this program is 21st century because the front end of it is local, small, MBE, endlessly MBE companies-
Right.
-having an opportunity to be contractors, not be, just plain contractors, and the way in general that we must do that in Baltimore City is to unbundle bids, so that projects are not always so big-
Right.
-that the same wonderful, blessed people who share their money and all that are developing, and, and that, and that the smaller MBEs are forever MBEing. And so, and that's not your department.
Thank you.
That's, that has to go to purchasing in finance to figure out how to deal with the larger problem that is, because people want to fix their own city.
Right.
Now, what, what, so what I wanted to say was, what was different about the program is that the emphasis on that, and on the training and apprenticeships of, and of these smaller companies being together in the effort, and being able to help each other and grow so that next year, they can come in and bid, as you've demonstrated or illustrated, for more property.
Right.
So that was all I wanted to say.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Julie. I want to sort of echo a little bit of what my two colleagues, Councilwoman Clark and Councilman Burnett, said, and talk just a little bit about subsidy, and how our city has done subsidy. And I also want to acknowledge everything you've said, Julie, about the federal government sort of ceasing to be a real partner in this work, and what a darn near impossible situation that puts us as a municipality in. I think all of that is true. However, I also think there's a real and fair perception that when we've done subsidy for development, a lot of it has gone toward large developers, toward high-end development, and, and in some ways toward subsidizing wealth that perhaps probably doesn't need subsidy, and, and it's sort, and it, and it's felt like, you know, my perception coming into this council, it's, it's felt like the larger developers come to the city, they present the plan, we sort of follow their lead. Here you have citizens who have come to their councilwoman to take the lead on rebuilding the city. Why don't we embrace them with the same open arms that- And, and again, I'm, I'm not-
I hope I haven't said anything that says I don't appreciate and welcome the partnership with everybody in this room.
I know, I know, no, no, I'm not.
They're, they're-
No, Julie, I'm not, I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not throwing any shade at you or at housing, but, I know, but, but, but I think there is a real perception out there that we have embraced with open arms, large developers, that we subsidized areas of wealth, and that why can't we attempt to get into the neighborhoods and do the sort of small, like Councilwoman Clark said, MBE development that folks want to do for themselves? Could we embrace that with the same level of openness as we've done for past pilots and TIFs for larger developers?
Right.
And, and before you answer, I will say, I appreciate everyone's passion, but let's please try to keep it to a minimum as we're trying to record as well, and have everybody heard.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cohen. The, you know, there are many, many types of investment and development that take, are needed to make the city move forward in the way we all believe it should.
Right.
And much of the subsidy and the investment that we do in Balt, in, within the Department of Housing and Community Development is actually for, towards affordable housing. So when you see one of the big development deals that we're involved in, like Metro Heights at 2,700 block of West Georgetown Road, that'll be affordable housing, you know, where Sojourner Place is opening this week in Upton, and it's transitional housing for homeless people. Those are real investments that the, the community development block grant money that we get from the federal government, and the home money that we get from the federal government, and as well as the affordable funding, capital funds that were on the ballot initiative last year, go towards that type of subsidy that are throughout our neighborhoods. The, you know, I think we would be here for a while if we really wanted to compare, like, vacant rowhouse rehab with TIFs. I mean, they're just different things. I would mention, though, that we are preparing to submit a Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant to HUD for the redevelopment of the Perkins site, which is 629 units of deeply subsidized public housing that, you know, has, needs to be completely renovated. So that is something that will need deep subsidy. It's in a neighborhood, and it's, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're neighbors who need a lot of our help. But to rehab vacant houses, it's, it's a different level of subsidy, and we, what we've done to date has primarily been buyer incentives, right? So we've, we've, we've discounted the price of the house at sale as a contribution to the development budget, and then after it's rehabbed, we've, we've had $5,000 and $10,000 incentives to encourage homeownership. We have revisited that, and we are now, in Park Heights for the first time, we will be offering a construction subsidy to the developer that will help, you know, kind of balance the cost of the rehab with the price that you're able to sell it at, which is the real problem in many of the neighborhoods. It's like, you know, you can, you can spend the same $100,000, you know, in Ashburn as you do in Allendale, but you're not going to get the same $100,000 back out of it. You know, so it's a matter of, like, rightsizing that subsidy and finding sources for it.
100%. I would just close by saying, I mean, I think we are on the cusp of facing an affordability crisis in our city, and I think everyone in this room and the housing department would readily acknowledge that, and so, to me, every penny of subsidy needs to be spent wisely and should not be used anymore to subsidize wealth and area, sorry, and areas where there's already going to be a strong market, or there could be a strong market without it.
Right. As I mentioned, that's a separate issue, so, okay. Is there any else from city government? I know we have a couple of agencies that have represented, Mr. Horton, did you want to say something?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chair. Walter Horton, head of Department of Real Estate. I last ran the Urban Homesteading Program, as it was called, from Charles Street. I was a member of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Councilman Clark did a fairly decent job of explaining the program. However, a couple of points that I'd like to make about the program, and I don't want to go all the way back in history, but I think it's pertinent to some of this discussion. At the time that we did the Urban Homesteading Program in Audubon, Murray Circle, and Falls Point, interest rates were at 14%. As an enticement, the city offered loans, as Mary Pat Clark has indicated, at 3%. So I think most of us can understand the excitement that was generated when we offered these properties at such a reduced interest rate. Mary Pat Clark only touched on it barely. Each one of those properties that we had in the Urban Homesteading Program, we hired a consultant to do a cost write-up for code items. You had to bring the house up to code. Depending on your affordability, we would allow code-plus items, fancy kitchen, hardwood floors, not vinyl, not tile. So depending on your affordability, that price could change. We gave the individual purchasers a copy of that write-up. That write-up had line for line, every item that had to be done, to be brought up to housing code, and a cost. We took a piece of paper, we Xeroxed, put the cost, so that no one could see the cost, gave that to the homeowner. They took that to their contractor, they came back with three contractors. We had estimators that go over and made recommendations and suggestions that this contractor's price is out of whack, way out of whack, this contractor's price is way too low. Hey, I think you may want to look at Contractor C. In addition to that, we managed the money. We controlled the checks. The inspector would go out, make his inspection, determine this property was ready for draw. That check was a two-party check system. It was made out to the homeowner and the contractor. So we assured that the contractor got paid, the homeowner was able to see that the contractor got paid. At the end of the day, that loan, payments came due on that loan six months after the loan was granted. So folks had a timeline to get that rehab work done. The quicker you got that work done, the longer time you had to go without payments. It was challenging, most folks met that deadline, so they wouldn't have dual payments where they were renting and making these mortgage payments. Generally, that's how the program worked. As Mary Pat Clark also indicated, the program ran out of large chunks of properties. We petitioned HUD, we got properties from the federal government that they gave to us for a dollar. They were HUD foreclosures. In particular, we tried it in Park Heights Avenue, Garrison Boulevard, my mother was a recipient of one of the Dollar Houses. Scattered sites don't work. Individual scattered sites don't work. You wind up being next door to a potential slumlord, another vacant, and that destroys the homeownership opportunities for those families. Given some of the tools now, I'm going to the 21st century, given some of the tools that we have in our portfolio now, receivership, vendors' liens, tax sale foreclosures expedited, I think we do have an opportunity, but we have to be very, very selective, very, very strategic in the properties that we select to go into the 21st century Homesteading Program. It's never, ever going to be like it was in the '70s. It's just not going to happen that way. But there's ways that we can, I believe there's a ways that we can put together some of the existing parts of the Urban Homesteading Program, and if we can find, the real key is, he who has goal makes the rules. If we could find the goal, we can change the rules. But important to that is finding the resources. Julie talked about the Baltimore lending, Baltimore City lending, it was originally created to eliminate plight. It was originally created to help people that couldn't go to the 203K program, that was doing three or four vacancies at a time. So we do have a resource. I would suggest that we look at creative financing mechanisms. If we do a pilot program, and the city can find the money to lend for the rehabilitation, you take those proceeds and you roll it over, and continue to take it to do the next project. So there's ways, but I'm not the financing person, you got, you got financing here, but I believe if we step back and look at this from a couple of different perspectives, there are blocks in our neighborhoods that I, I believe are truly worthy of such a program, but we have to be very strategic, and Julie quoted a cost of $100, $120 a square foot. Some of those costs can even be lowered if you do it at economy of scale. So I think, I think we have the makings, it's the resources that, that really is going to make or break that, that process.
Certainly. Mr. Horton, now, I will say that, you know, what you provided has been very useful, given that, the history of the program. There are a couple of things that you said that were also echoed, echoed by Ms. Day when she came up. So you mentioned scattered site not, not working, we talked about the whole block strategy.
Mm-hmm.
You both also talked about the financing piece, and the ability, if you have multiple properties, to be able to do that much more efficiently. Did anyone else have a question, Mr. Horton?
I did want to address Councilman's question.
Yes.
The budget, the budget, the budget for the unit that did the Homesteading Program in the '70s, '75 in particular, when I took over, was a million-dollar operating cost that was for salaries, for staffing, that did not include the loan fund, nor the money for the estimate, not, the money for the vendors to do the write-ups. The individual write-ups was like $200 per write-up, and that's in the, in '75.
1975 money.
Okay? I want to be clear, '75 money.
Absolutely.
Actually, since, since I now have the microphone in front of me again, I did have a question about one of the things that you said, when you were talking about how you, we could get the, the square foot rehab cost down a little bit if we used economies of scale.
Mm-hmm.
How, what are some of the ways that we can do economies of scale when we're talking about scattered site projects and lots of individual homeowners essentially rehabbing their own home?
Let me, let me do it in this fashion.
Okay.
I've toyed with rehabbing myself, okay? Somewhat enjoyable. I brought my materials from some of the building supply auctions.
Ah, co-op.
In particular, there's an auction coming up in November that's called Peak Auction. It's a building supply auction where you can buy and buy. Hardwood floors, doors, windows, you name it. You can buy and buy, cheap. My example, I brought 32 feet of granite, four slabs, it's 40-foot slabs, I think it is, less than $500, building supply auction. So if anybody know anything about construction, that's very, very reasonable. Doors and windows, I brought-
You've got lots of people behind you nodding.
Hey, look, doors and windows. We have, we have a company on Washington Boulevard called Southern Sales, right here in the city, that sells building supply materials every fifth week. So it's a matter of warehousing, buy and buy, somebody got to buy and buy, contractors. I, I was told about this from a contractor friend. Strangely enough, I mean, you know contractors, you know, like, man, you're working on the house, you come inside, they say, no, I got to go to auction. So what auction are you going to, so he took me with him. I was like, wait, man, you're ripping me off, you charged me all this money, and you brought this door and window for-
Actually, I would guess nowadays with social media and the internet, it'd be even easier for individuals across the city to work with each other to do that kind of co-op bulk purchasing.
I mean, so in closing, for me, I think we've got to be very strategic in terms of- So in closing, for me, I think we've got to be very strategic in terms of the location. We've got to get creative with the financing. We've got to get creative with the construction costs.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's very, very useful. Again, thinking about how we can reduce costs. Since we have finance here, do you want to add to this mix? Please introduce yourself.
Good night. My name is Pedro Punter, Revenue Director for the Finance Department. First of all, I really appreciate the background about the details of the program. I wasn't even in the country when this program existed. So, and thank you, Mr. Horton, also for the additional details. I think all comes down to the resources that we have available to fund such a program and make it successful. I mean, there's no doubt that that was a very well-done program back in the 70s, but how do we move it forward with the limited resources that we have? Again, you propose, I mean, there's some certain differences that we need to highlight what happened, what happened in the 70s and they are not available now. And lastly, Mr. Horton actually mentioned availability of federal money, which we don't have. And also, back in the days, the city was able to issue debt in order to finance this development. You know that the city has limitations in order to issue additional debt. And if we are able to do it, we have to be very careful how this offsetting cost will move forward in terms of we're going to be eventually paying more in those debt that we are issuing than financing. So, basically, we have to find the resources, which we don't have. And it's something that definitely, I mean, I'm very glad that this type of program is coming back, but it has to be a very cooperative solution, not only for the Finance Department, but you guys also. So I don't want to go into more details. I think they gave a very thoughtful presentation and details about the program, but I'm welcome to, you know, any questions you might have to the Finance Department.
So one of the things, again, this was sort of mentioned before, they're talking about, you know, bond, and also you're talking about debt. Where would you see the city standing with that in terms of trying to issue a bond with this and how to pay that back?
Yeah, we have a limited annual debt issuance of $65 million. And not long ago, we used to issue only 50. It was, you know, went to the poll for the residents to vote for additional $50 million. And we use, we use that money for basically capital projects. So every five years, there's a group that gets together and recommends the city in terms of affordability of debt issuance. And the last time they did this research, they said that we are about a maximum capacity in terms of affordability. That means that we cannot issue more debt beyond that $65 million at this point. So that limits our capability to fund programs like this, by the, you know, by this type of program.
Any additional questions for finance?
No.
Well, thank you. And I know we'll still have folks on hand to stick around. Are there any other agencies that want to, or representative agencies that want to have a word? Yes, please, come forward. Thank you. And please introduce yourself as well.
Sorry. Thank you. I'm Angel St. Jean. I am the Assistant Director for Strategic Initiatives for the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. Our agency is committed to helping people get jobs. That's what we do. We help design, fund, manage training programs, as well as we help to match people with jobs. We see this as a great opportunity to focus job creation on local residents. And we would approach that with the same zeal that you've discussed in helping MBE developers get opportunities to develop property. We think that's really important. We are doing similar work with helping development projects meet their local hiring requirements. And we've been piloting a special initiative with school construction where we've been working with training programs that prepare people for construction jobs and helping to bring residents to the table to help them get those jobs for school construction. So we think a similar process like that could help, assuming those local hiring requirements are in place. We would need a process to determine what types of jobs and the amounts that would be available in advance so that we can prepare people to be able to go into those jobs. That's a critical component. And then obviously, there's the funding for training that would be important. But we're happy to be involved with designing what that would look like and how to help meet the opportunity to create jobs for local residents.
I will say that's very encouraging. I know I have a couple of questions, or I have one question. I don't know if anyone else does. But primarily, you know, this sounds, like I said, very encouraging. Are there any particular challenges you may see transitioning into this type of a project, considering what you currently do with MOED?
Yeah, I mean, I think the big thing is, I mean, what we've talked about is a lot of these projects are big developers, big contractors that are bringing in lots of people to different jobs at one time. So we're talking about smaller scale in terms of the development projects, as well as the number of people that'll be hired. So that's going to look different for each job and the timing of, you know, preparing people for the types of jobs that'll be available. And when the projects are actually, you know, coming online, you know, an individual, you know, resident or neighbor fixing up the house next door to them or on their block, you know, it's different than Port Covington. And so I think just making that adjustment for scale. But, you know, we can figure that out.
Additional questions? Well, thank you so much for your time. One of the things we want to do, because we recognize that as City Council, we represent the people of Baltimore. And, you know, as elected officials and as agency representatives, you know, we work every day. But also, the people of Baltimore are so important and so encouraging to see all of you come out here tonight. We do have a coalition of folks who have thought long and hard about this issue. We want to give them the opportunity to come forward. So please feel free to occupy some of our seats up here in the front. So the Homes Coalition, Home Ownership, Opportunity Mentorship for Economic Success, Tyrone Boast, Darlene Gore, Kenneth Austin, and Ronald Stewart. If you're here, please feel free to come up. And if you want to provide some testimony, we're more than welcome to have it.
Good evening, City Council and the citizens of Baltimore.
He can speak from there. Anyone else who wants to speak, and feel free to come up front, but while you're speaking.
I don't think Kenneth Austin is here. He wanted to speak. But Ronald Stewart is coming up. He's going to speak on the restorability of houses. He's a contractor. Kenneth Austin is in Washington DC right now, so he won't be able to make it in. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Retired Tyrone Boast. I'm the President of Homes, Home Ownership, Opportunity, and Mentorship for Economic Success. I would first like to acknowledge Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark for her diligence, her hard work, and her dedication to the citizens of Baltimore. She actually met us on Saturday twice about this issue. And that does show concern for the citizen. Also, I would like to thank the people that are here to support this bill. Where y'all at? Okay? And I also would like to give thanks to all these petitioners, because we actually consulted the people in the neighborhood. We got their, you know, we wanted to know how they felt about what was going on in their communities.
We want to make sure we, with reporters.
You want to see them?
No, 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 you use the mic so we can get through.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so unlike a lot of these agencies, we actually consulted the people in the communities, okay? And we got almost 1,000 names on these petition forms. Some of them are still out. So, and what the petition says is, to Mayor Pew, the Baltimore City Council, Governor Hogan, the Maryland State Legislature, and the US Congress, yes, I agree that we should, one, end the displacement of people from their neighborhoods and end the destruction of their communities just to give land and tax subsidies to developers and investors. Two, introduce the 1% interest renovation/rebuilding loan Dollar House/Dollar Lot Program, because the house will be built from the ground up, for the individual citizen as a fairest way to ensure funds earmarked for the community are used to help the people who actually live there with training, jobs, and homeownership. Number three, end the destruction of the remaining affordable housing stock in Baltimore, a city with a documented lack of affordable housing. And by that, I mean, according to the Urban Institute, for every 100 families that are looking for housing, there's only 43 units. And we're talking about destroying housing, affordable housing stock. And my brother's put together 15 of these vacant houses. And as soon as he gets one done, he's putting people in them. You know, they can't wait to get in them. Matter of fact, I put central AC systems in it. I'm a master plumber, master HVAC tech, I'm licensed master gasfitter, some other stuff, you know, I cannot talk about. But, so I do have some experience in rehabbing distressed homes, okay? As well as our coalition. A coalition is a group of contractors and other subject matter experts. And what got us together was, we saw on the news where Governor Hogan and Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake, then mayor, says that they're going to allocate $700 million to tear down houses in our communities. And we felt that there was a better way to spend this taxpayer dollars. And so we're offering up this grassroots, this is truly a grassroots program, okay? The citizens of Baltimore want this, as you can see by the attendance here. It's not crowded like this every day, I'm sure, when y'all have your meetings, is it? So the way this is supposed to work, what we envision is, and I hear a whole lot scuttlebutt about where we get the money from. I would say to you, obviously, the money, if you've got money to tear down houses, $700 million to tear down houses, the money is there. Also, we found money to, $660 million to give away for Port Covington. I don't have a problem with that. I know development is important, but let's throw a bone to the working-class citizen once in a while. They pay taxes too. So another thing about this program is, there's a training component. In our organization, we have electricians, okay? We have master craftsmen of all kinds. When we put these houses together, it's going to take carpenters, it's going to take plumbers, it's going to take electricians, it's going to take all kinds of craftsmen. The last time I worked for, I don't own business now, but the last time I worked for somebody as a plumber, a master plumber, I was making $35 an hour. Okay, we got, the problem with, one of the main problems that we don't understand in the city with the violence is that a lot of it is socioeconomic in nature. Somebody, according to the Justice Policy Institute, San Antonio Winchester has a near 50% unemployment rate for black males aged 16 to 64. Okay, so, and if you take a man, put him in jail, and pay $38,000 a year to incarcerate him, then set him back on the street with no skills, what do you think's going to happen? Okay, so while he's waiting to recidivate, he's making our neighborhoods unsafe. Just slogging up people does not solve the problem when you're not dealing with the core issue of the problem. And in case you notice, we got a big drug cartel business running in Baltimore. With the drugs come the guns. And so it's not about race, go to Mexico, go to Colombia, same issue. Drugs, you gotta have guns to sell drugs. And so whatever they're shooting people for, the reason they have the guns in the first place is so they can sell dope. So if we give people, incentivize people to go to work, then they don't have to dodge a thug and the police. Okay, so the drug deal, what I'm trying to say is, the drug deal shouldn't be the biggest employer in the neighborhood. And this is the thing that we're trying, and here's the other thing. Once you put that man on that street, you gave him a criminal record. So you almost made him unmarketable as far as getting a job. So that's the other thing this is meant to address, the ex-offender, you know, ex-pen, or returning citizens. Okay, so we figure that, let's say you, okay, a dollar, it's going to take more a dollar to refurbish a house. All right, but the incentive is a 1% interest loan. And I think that's enough instead to bring people out to buy a Dollar House. I want one, you know? Anybody here want a Dollar House? With 1% interest loans? Okay. So if you, if you, let's say it costs $100,000 to, just off the top of my head, $100,000 to renovate a house. At 1% interest, then if you use your mortgage calculator, you'll find, you'll have a $300 a month mortgage. That's quite affordable. I have a Chinese client. She's bought 60 of these vacant properties. And every time, as soon as you get them done, two weeks later, she's got a tenant in there. There is a lack of affordable housing stock in the city where you get $12,000 a month, $12,000 a month to live in the hood. That's too much. That's more than my mortgage. So this will work. I don't, you know, all this stuff, people are talking about, oh, nobody's going to live in these communities. They live them all the time because we restore these houses all the time. It's been going on. It's happening now. It's not going to stop if we don't get Dollar House. But I hope we do, because this is the voice of the people. And we've got to start listening to the people. We just, I mean, and the reason we got the $700 million in the first place is because of Freddie Gray riots. They announced it in Freddie Gray's neighborhood. And as Dr. King said, a riot is the language of the unheard. So let's start listening to our citizens and let's try to, you know, let's try to make something happen that works, that's been proven to work.
Well, I will say, you know, I appreciate, we appreciate your diligence, your passion on this issue. I know one of the programs that you may reference to is the Core Program, Creating Opportunities for Renewal and Enterprise, and that is from the Maryland State Government. So what you have is a number of entities, whether it be Baltimore City and then also nonprofits, who are doing neighborhood development, who are applying for some of those funds to do things like demolition. One of the challenges we have in Baltimore is that we do have some housing stock that is past the point of being rehabbed. Some houses are in such deep disrepair that they're really impacting some of the houses on particular blocks. And so you look at some development projects that are on board. So part of it is the demolition, part of it is also for renovation, some of those other projects. That's not money coming from Baltimore City. I just want to be clear about that. So that's not money that we have to pull out. That's money from, you know, from the state. So I just want to be clear about that. But I did want to ask a question about-
Can I answer that question you just, the point you just made? The point you just made. Can I address that? Okay. We realize that that's state money. We get it. We understand that. So Homes as a coalition has actually met with state delegates in reference to this. One of the persons that we met was with, was Delegate McIntosh, Maggie McIntosh, who is the Chair of the Appropriations Board for the State Legislature. She said that there is a way to divert some of these funds. If, it just takes work. It just works. The stuff we're talking about takes work. People don't want, I get it. People don't want to do work. We don't want to do our jobs. We want a job, we don't want to do it. Go ahead, sir.
My question's about the 15 houses that you've done. So is that, that's the totality? And then whereabouts are they, because thinking about it, we talked about in terms of housing, are they on a single block? Are they scattered? I'm just trying to get a little clarity on terms of 15 houses you mentioned earlier.
Some, well, my brother is buying these houses all over the city. And he's been restoring them. But my clients, I have clients too. I run a plumbing, heating, and cooling business. One of my clients is an Asian lady, and she's bought like 60, she wants to buy 100 houses, okay? She's 46 already, and she's restored them, okay? And so this can be done, and they're all over the city. It's not no certain block. It's, I mean, but people want housing so, I mean, I'm sorry, it isn't a certain block. People want housing so bad that as soon as you get these houses done, they're moving in them. They want to know when they can be rented. And the other thing about this program is, if you're paying $300 a month for a mortgage, there shouldn't be high hurdles to you getting that loan. Okay, that's the things that traditionally have kept, I'll just say what it is, black folks from getting houses in the city, especially what happened with the housing crisis that we just had and all the predatory lending that went on in Baltimore City. I'm sorry.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. I just want, I had 10 good reasons, but I think I just about covered all of them, that this program. The other thing about this that I did miss to say, if you take $94 million and demolish 4,000 houses over four years, which is what I read in the Sun Paper that they intend to do, that Mayor Blake and Governor Hogan announced in San Antonio Winchester, if just simple division, you come up with $23,500 to tear down one house. So for each house you save with the Dollar House program, you already saved $23,500 that you ain't got to tear down. In addition to the tax revenue that you want to get. And by the way, first and foremost, we're not asking for anything. This is a loan program for working-class people. You will get the money back with interest. So don't think we're out here trying to beg for money. No. Listen, money, we'll restore the city, we'll train young men in the trades, and we'll do what we have to do. And then get out of our way.
You know, there was one piece, and just want to be clear about it. We talked about, you know, displacement, destruction, and thinking about affordable housing. One of the points I think we need to also focus on the city is that we have a whole glut of housing. Part of the challenge is that we've lost a significant- Part of the challenge is that we've lost a significant population. We've gone from nine hundred fifty thousand down to six hundred fourteen thousand, those people didn't take those houses with them. We have houses that have been vacant for ten and twenty years, so some of those houses, again, albeit need to be demolished, but then some could and should be redeveloped for homeownership, and I think that's the key point we'll look at, affordable homeownership within our communities.
And I have a contractor that's a member of our coalition, that's going to address, you know, the restorability of these houses and how it can be done.
Okay.
But as far as what you're saying is the population decline, Baltimore's been in decline, for the last, during the last dollar house program, which was a success. And because...
In a targeted neighborhood, that's another thing, in targeted neighborhoods close to downtown. I think that was another piece too, that looking at where those houses were, they were the places that were clear for the highway.
Buy a dollar house that's not near the harbor. All right, so, what we're saying is that, the people that I spoke to in these communities, the people that I spoke to in these communities with all these petition forms, they come from all over Baltimore. They're not interested in living downtown, but they want this program.
Councilman Clark had a comment or a question?
I'll save it for later, well, let me ask it now. So, you've heard what the agencies had to say. I've certainly heard what you've been saying and talking about and doing, and I'm very excited about it. But Mr. Bowles, after tonight, I mean, I think we've demonstrated the interest, you've demonstrated the interest. We need to work with these agencies to get this going.
Absolutely.
Is that, are you game for that?
I'm game for working with whoever I got to work with to make this a reality and save this city.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there another member of your coalition who wanted to speak? Councilman Henry?
I did, I feel obliged to offer one note of caution, which is, I think that it would be great to bring back the dollar house program, and I think we can do that. I think it's a mistake to try to act like the way to do it is to take the demolition money that the governor has wanted to give us to do demolition and use it for this. I say that it's a mistake for two reasons. One is, that's money that he wants to give the city for a purpose that the city has asked for, because there are neighborhoods where there are houses where the people who live in those neighborhoods want those houses demolished. Okay, hold on, wait, 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 bear with me. Bear with me.
Stay in order, people.
Bear with me. We've heard, we've heard a lot of good things tonight about the dollar house program, and there are lots of houses in the city that would be good prospects for a dollar house program. A lot of the houses that are targeted for demolition would not be good targets for a dollar house program, because they have been vacant and abandoned for so long, that they are now in need of so much renovation, it wouldn't be cost effective to renovate them, not even for an individual person trying to do it themselves. And I say this, my colleagues know, before I was on the council, I was in community development, I rehabbed, I worked for a nonprofit that rehabbed houses over in Patterson Park. There are houses that it just does not make monetary sense for an individual person to rehab them without some kind of subsidy or gap funding, and that would be something else we would need on top of a dollar house program. So all I'm saying, I'm not saying don't do this, I'm not saying don't want to do this. I'm just, what I'm saying is, let's focus on doing a dollar house program as opposed to focusing on not doing the demo program. They're two different things.
Can I address that? For what I've read, and I'm not as smart as anybody on this council, but...
Oh, don't please, don't even.
From what I've read about this thing, ninety-four million is supposed to tear down four thousand houses over four years, then six hundred million is supposed to be subsidies for developers. So, I'm talking to seven hundred million dollars that Governor Hogan announced in San Antonio Winchester. That's six hundred millions, that's the way they broke it down. I mean, if you Google it, you can get it off Google.
Ninety-five million was for the demolition, the other rest of the six hundred thousand was supposed to be for a rate redevelopment.
Six hundred million. So that's where, that's where the money comes from. So if you must demo some houses, do so, but you still have six hundred million dollars left to give away to the developers. So why not use it for the citizens?
Where's the six hundred million to give away to? Are you talking about Port Covington?
No, that's a separate issue, but you're talking about all these, like there'll be an announcement tomorrow, you have entities, nonprofits that have sought for funding, similar to what you talked about, to do neighborhood developments, they've come through with applications and, yeah. No, no, talking about core. So I mean, there are different stages of it. So part of it is demolition, part of it is also in terms of redevelopment of those projects.
Okay.
Yeah, so we want a West Baltimore, we have a few coming up. All right, you had other members?
I have other members, but I'm going to close by saying, not only do I believe this will be a success, because I think this is going to probably have to be a lottery to give these houses away, and not only that, it's going to spur development, because you'll have something to build next to. There's going to be plenty of houses left, we want to get seven thousand houses, but there's sixteen thousand vagants and like fourteen thousand lots, last time somebody counted. So there's plenty for the developers. We're not trying to take all the money, but they are. So, we're just suggesting, just throw us a bone. Just throw us a bone, that's all we say, just throw the working class person a bone, please. In the midst of all this development. Well, that pretty much sums up for me. I'm going to have Mr. Ronald Stewart, a contractor, he's owner of Reliant Contracting, explain to you how these houses can be, can be mitigated, thanks. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, I guess. Hello, everyone. Mr. Bowles asked me to come up here and speak.
Yes, please speak into the microphone so we can all hear you, thank you.
To come and speak of my experience and expertise in home remodeling. I've been doing this for twenty-three years, all over Baltimore. I've never lived anywhere else. I live in Baltimore, in one of those dilapidated neighborhoods, on Division Street, nineteen hundred blocks. Nineteen hundred block of Division Street. I've remodeled my house, it's the best house in the neighborhood. People walk by my house and stare at it. These houses can be refurbished. They're row houses, they're built to last, they're built to stand. One house holds up the next. If the next house isn't fell, hasn't fallen down, you can rebuild the one in between. They did it in Federal Hill, they did it in Alaca City, they do it all over Baltimore. So when people say these houses cannot be redone, I don't see it. I do it all the time. I do it every day. I'm doing it today, tomorrow, I'll be doing it. With the houses in Baltimore, Silver Spring, Pasadena, all over Baltimore I've worked. I did some of the houses in Federal Hill. Those houses are so small, they charging two, three hundred thousand dollars to remodel those houses, when you could easily do it for a lot less. It's not, it's not that we're asking for an exorbitant amount of money to remodel houses that should be remodeled anyway, and the people that live there shouldn't be forced to move, so that developers can come in and build bigger houses to sell to people that have money. Because we don't, we don't have the money. We don't have the money to buy those houses that they're building in my neighborhood, two blocks from my house. They tore down a whole block and rebuilt it. We can't afford those. A dollar house program would give people the opportunity to own a house that they've been renting for years. It would give someone who don't even imagine owning a house, the opportunity to own a house. And for a hundred thousand dollars, yeah, we could do it, easy. The whole house, it could be torn up. Me and my partner, we do it every day. I think that, I think that it's more, I don't know, business oriented, to give it to a bigger company, but we have to eat too. I struggle to make a living as a business owner in Baltimore. Marine Corps, I've been at Marine Corps, I've worked hundreds of jobs. I have licenses in carpentry, welding. I think this is a great program. I'm behind it one hundred percent, me and my company.
Well, sir, I just wanted to say that we thank you for the work you're doing. One of the things that comes across with what you're saying, and we've talked about this amongst ourselves as well, that we definitely want to see opportunities for homeownership, opportunities for folks to invest in their communities and do that, do that work that you've been doing. And again, we recognize, and even my colleague next to me mentioned earlier, that oftentimes it's the smaller developer, the individual has a challenge, and again, we see more of the mid-sized developers who have an opportunity. So, we want to work creatively with housing to make sure there are opportunities that will be available. So thank you for sharing your testimony as well.
I think we're making this too complicated. We're making this too complicated. A person wants to buy a house, you're willing to sell it to them for a dollar, you give them a loan, they get a contractor, they have a house. What's that? Developers, developers, they want money, they need money. You know, they need to do this, they need to do that. I'm a contractor, all I need to do is for you to tell me what I need today. You know, you get your own loan, you can go through the bank, I've did two O three Ks, I've did all types of loans. And I know hundreds of contractors that'll do the same thing. Like I said, I just think it's way too complicated, too much barack, bureaucratic, too much bureaucratic mess.
Thank you for your testimony.
It's too much. And like I said, I've lived in Baltimore all my life, started from east side to the west side, and it's all the same. It doesn't matter what area you go in, it seems like they're developing the areas where people have money. They're not looking at areas where we live at.
No, I'll say, as somebody who represents west and southwest Baltimore, and some of the neighborhoods you're talking about, I definitely feel what you're saying. Darlene Gore, Ms. Gore, would you like to speak?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've heard, and I'll start off, my name is Darlene Gore. I am a retired major from the armed forces, served twenty-seven years. In addition to that, I figured out a way to also retire from the civilian sect of the federal government. So I spent twenty-five years working at, through the federal government, and retired from NSA. I grew up in Baltimore City, so I make the joke all the time with the guys that I'm, I think I'm the only one, or I would say, just a few of us, that are in this organization that don't build and fix anything. So, I'm not here to say as a contractor, I can put a nail and a hammer and put a roof there. But what I can speak about is the heart of the people of Baltimore. When I look at the news and just walk through particular neighborhoods, my heart breaks. Because as a kid, I grew up in West Baltimore, in the Mondomin Mall area. I also grew up in East Baltimore. And I do remember Mary Pat Clark coming through with Dewburns, and just walking through the particular neighborhood. I remembered them saying, okay, we can do this, that, and the other, to make this community stand. And I'm talking Preston and Patterson Park. So if we go through there and look at that neighborhood today, it is nothing like the community that I grew up in. And it was so much so to the point for them, for the perception to be there to say that people don't care, where my initial job, first job, was Baltimore Summer Court. And in that job, my duty was to, we got out, we cleaned the neighborhood, grass came up through the cracks, anything that had to do with beautification, and I think they even had the Afro newspaper that had an Afro clean block, and we won the award time and time again. So I'm just here, because I noticed that as we're talking, we're laying out policies, and I just want to give someone a chance to reminisce, because what we see today is not Baltimore City. This is not the city, it is not the people, and yes, people have left, they're continuing to move, because hope is lost. But this is not us. And you know, and we're going to put our pants on every day and come out and work, you know, I worked for IRS for seventeen years, cleaned up, came down, and did that look, had that personification, so that I could do the role. And then to look back and say, hey, I can't even take a hand and help fix the community that got me to where I was, or where I am today. So yes, I'm retired, two pensions, happily, I'm just happy. But I'm not that happy where I cannot look back and realize and see that there are people in that community that are suffering, that do not have the opportunities that I had. Because when I decided that I wanted to go to college, because hey, that's something that we don't, we're just trying to hopefully get someone through high school. But when I made my mind up to go to college, that degree was what allowed me to become an officer in the United States Army. In addition to that, once college, I finished, and you would say, well, what are you doing now? Guess what I'm doing? I just finished getting a bachelor's degree in theology, I'm now in seminary. So it doesn't stop. Once it's embedded in someone, it continues. Our job, our job, I'm not just going to put this on the council people, I'm talking about anybody that's able and has the ability to stand up and say, this is what we need to do to help our community, this is what we need to do. So it's not about someone who's saying, I got a plan and this is the policy, what do you, can I do to help this situation? And then, you know what, then I can really go home and rest.
Thank you, thank you. So, so we want to be respectful of time, and we have a, we have a number of people who have signed up to testify, and so what I want to do is give folks two or three minutes for their testimony. I'm going to read off names in the order that I see them, and please come forward.
I would love to address the council tonight, this evening, if possible. I just need like, I need like ten minutes, I'm on a list.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Brandon Williams. I don't even know, I see it back here, New York, I own it, I'm in the real estate, I've been doing it for four years now, and this doesn't have to be a monetary issue here with this dollar program. I go to auctions every day, I was there today, and it's several properties that are vacant, that we would want to invest in. I'm not, I'm not a big developer, I don't have millions of dollars, I take, I save my money from each property that I get or I flip, and I reinvest it back into the community. And it's several vacant properties that we would love to, you know, have access to, but it's a lot of red tape. The Vacus the Value Program, you have to first purchase the property, pull permits, and flip that property before you become eligible for Vacu the Value property, no matter if you have a million dollars, a billion dollars, unless you know someone downtown. And this is the red tape, this is the problem that we see in, you know, with the city and rebuilding the city, because right now the city's a blight. A buddy of mine just purchased two properties through the Aston Auctions today, on a block that has several vacant properties. But he's willing to invest his money, mind you, he didn't get it for a dollar, he paid ten thousand dollars for this property, plus whatever fee they have, and he's willing to invest the money that he has to rehab this house on a block that has potential dollar houses, that other investors could spend money on and actually flip. This doesn't have to be a loan program at all. I mean, as it gets rolling and you guys receive the tax dollars back from the property taxes, which I pay, for eleven properties that I have now, which are, none of them are from Vacu the Value, because I'm not, I don't have the opportunity to be a part of that, because of so much red tape. You understand what I'm saying? So, I just don't understand why everybody's bickering and fighting about trying to get money from demolition money, and instead of there, we just need to rehab the city, the city's a mess. I don't understand the problem.
I'll say, you know, I appreciate your testimony, and I know folks from housing here, and if there are ways that we can make Vacu the Value a little bit more user friendly, we can talk about that. I do know some people have acquired properties through that, but again, I think we need to be a little bit more clear about that, so we do have folks on hand as well.
The problem, well, they're here? He's a Vacu the Value guy? Okay, well, I was... Okay, well, I was supposedly vetted, I sent in a financial document from my bank. My first purchase was 3912 Arley Avenue in the 21213 area code, zip code, I'm sorry. And I purchased it for $34,000, it needed windows, doors, and paint. So, that I rented the house out for two years and then sold it for $86,000. That property was what started my ball to roll to buy more properties and do it. But since I didn't pull a permit on that property, because it didn't need a permit to be pulled for the work I did to get the $86,000, with basically $56,000 in profit, I wasn't eligible for the Vacants to Value. However, I did have the money to rehab a property in that size. So, like, the red tape is what's in the way of progress. There's several guys in here, that was here earlier, when I got here, I don't know if they're still here, that are at these auctions every day, Aston Auctions, Alice Cooper, because I met all of them. And we're spending $10,000 to $30,000 on a shell. And with that shell, you have to spend $80,000 minimum on a three-story one to get it fixed. It's something that you can do it for $30,000. So, it's not a problem, it's not something that falls on the budget. Like, the budget doesn't have to be issued. This is something that can help the city and potentially make money. Now, if you guys want to take the revenue that's made off the taxes, the annual taxes that you're not getting right now from these vacant properties, and then allow homeowners, because the budget doesn't, honestly, I'm not going to say the budget needs to be something that hindered on someone paying that loan, that doesn't make sense. But if it's free money that you guys make off these Vacants to Values from people who like me, who myself, who wants to spend their hard-earned money in rehabbing the city. Because I mean, why would I not? It doesn't make any sense not to get a take, I'm spending $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, $10,000 every three months for Alice Cooper to buy houses that you guys can just give me for a dollar.
No, thank you. And I will say, if there are specific cases, I think it might be important to even be able to talk offline if there are opportunities to really get together. But no, I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront, because it's hearings like this that allow us to talk about some of the challenges that folks are facing, and to be clear about it. So, thank you for bringing that. But I definitely want to make sure that we're able to connect in terms of housing and Vacants to Value moving forward, because we want to make sure that you're able to be plugged into that system. So, thank you for sharing that tonight.
A dollar program though, Vacants to Value costs money, dollars, it's a dollar.
I understand.
And we can do it, I'm sorry, one more second, and we can do it block for block. If you do one block at a time, for a dollar, and that, you know, me and whoever else, whoever guys who want to invest in that block, rehab the block. One block at a time.
Now, what I'm going to do is, I want everybody to understand, I'm going to start calling people in order. Because people, we're going to order, because people have signed up and been waiting here. So, I'll name, the first name that I see is Christopher Best, is Christopher Best here? I'm sorry? I'm following the sign-in sheet, Christopher Best, is Christopher Best here? Okay, is Paul, okay, Paul Plymouth?
Good afternoon, council, good afternoon, citizens. My name is Paul Plymouth, and full disclosure, I am a city employee, but I am recusing myself to speak as a citizen of Baltimore and one who also went through the Vacants to Value process, but unfortunately was unsuccessful. Reason why I wanted to briefly share my story is because, for those that are interested in the Dollar House, I want you to also be aware of some of the challenges that will come up, particularly the financial ones in the beginning phases. Because quite frankly, I had a lot of delays that stalled my application, well, the process, and ultimately, it ended up not working out for me. And this isn't just for everyone to hear, but Julie, I'd be glad to talk to you about this too. Because I did also come up with a list of recommendations. I gave it to my real estate officer over in housing, and the whole time, he basically said, well, this isn't my area, this isn't my concern. So, I had a very frustrating experience, and I wasn't one that wanted to play the city employee card. I wasn't going to, he knew who I worked for, it didn't matter to me. I just wanted to go through this process right. And if that's how you treat a city employee, that's how you would treat anyone else too. If that's how you would treat someone that is also on the city payroll, and we're working together to improve the city, that's how they'll treat anyone behind me right now. I just wanted to say that for anyone that wants to go through, whether it's Vacants to Value or the Dollar House program, there should be resources available to let people know, okay, as we're going through this process, these are things that you can do on your end to get ready for settlement, to make sure that you have your financing together. Where I did have that ready, it took two months for my, it took two months to be able to hear something about my Vacants to Value application. It took several months for the property to get appraised. And then, once it was appraised, it took several months again to actually get a LDA, Land Disposition Agreement. And through so many hurdles, through so many communication setbacks, I wasn't even able to find out what was happening with my application. And it became so frustrating, because people would say, why don't you just go out and buy a regular house? And I kept saying, because I believe in the core, and I believe in the potential of the program. But at this point in time, I still do believe in that, but I could not recommend it to someone. And with the engineer I had to pay for, with the 203K specialist, with hiring someone to get the floor plans together too, unfortunately, all of it took too long, and the lenders' requirements, it changed. So, the way that lenders would calculate your student loans, unfortunately, before was discretionary. Now, it's required to, in the format that they use and looking at your eligibility, I could no longer get the house I wanted to get. And because of that, unfortunately, I'm sad to say, I'm out $4,000 because of that. So, I would love this program, whether it's Vacants to Value or the Dollar House, if it is implemented, to be speedier and to also give the applicant constant communication as to what's going on, whether it is electronic feedback, so that you have a status bar to see what's going on, or if you have someone reach out to you on a frequent basis to let you know what's going on, and to also not have an attitude when he calls you at a time that you can't communicate. And then, when you call back 15 minutes later, or five minutes later, or whenever the person's not available, and it takes them days to contact you again, the communication and the process just has to be cleaned up, whether it's for Vacants to Value or the Dollar House program. That's all I wanted to say.
Paul, I want to thank you for sharing your experience, because that's very insightful and gives us information that we can use moving forward. Is Nzinga Amon here? All right, yes, ma'am.
I'm a very courteous person, my time is very valuable. My name is Nzinga Amon. I'm the co-host of the Frank Conaway Show that airs on Fridays on WLB Radio. Having, my time is just as important as anybody else's. Let me say that first. Second of all, let me say that as a radio station that goes wide throughout the state and to some other states, we had the opportunity to have Mr. Boast on with his program. We also had a conversation with Councilwoman Clark concerning this issue. And the phone lines were lit up. We left the studio with people still hanging on the phones, because this issue is really serious to us. I don't care about anybody else right now, I'm talking about us. I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore City, and there was a time when I was very proud of that. Because our parents taught us to aspire to be greater than they were. It was imperative that I finish high school. It was imperative that I went to college. It was imperative that I became a woman, a community activist. For over 20 years, I put my life on hold, because my community was greater than me. And I remember a time when, I was raised on Wolf Street, down the street from Johns Hopkins Hospital. We had the best block in anywhere that I could think of. Marble steps that they scrubbed every Saturday. White sheets hanging on the line every Saturday. You didn't see me rumpled, I had play clothes, I had school clothes, and I had dress clothes. I was raised right. I tried to raise my family right, to respect myself first and respect others. Now, lately, I don't feel so proud of Baltimore. I couldn't care less about the bureaucracy, because y'all going to work that out. Because you're going to have to get voted on again, sooner than you think. And I remember things. And if anybody knows me, they know that I campaigned for the one I think is best. I couldn't care less how much money you make or where you come from. If you're not doing right by my people, you need to be up out of here. Simple. But lately, I have not been so proud of Baltimore City. We have terrible schools, and I volunteer teaching children to read three days a week, every week. I don't have to do it, I'm a retired social security worker. But I want the generation that follows me to know how to at least read. You want to know how much money I make? $100 a month car fare. But it's not about me, it's about the people I love. The people I love live in Baltimore. I live in southwest Baltimore. You're talking about blight, blight leads to crime. Blight leads to people just not caring anymore, because they've given up hope. You haven't seen a child bust to school because they don't have a place to live in. They don't know where they're going to get their meal, unless they get it in school. I'm talking facts from the street. I'm talking facts from the hood. And these are black, white, Hispanic, Ethiopian, all colors, but to me, they're human. I have seen, and I believe, I've seen people walking around the streets scared to death. But you know what? If they lived in a decent house, that they will eventually have a deed too. They straighten up their backs. They have a little bit of pride. If you see those brothers slinging on the corner, if they had a trade, they could know how to go and make a decent living and not have to run from the police. We have a murder rate of almost 300 young people in this city. Suppose somebody gave a tenth of them a job, where they could take a paycheck to the bank and cash it for real dollars. And suppose me, a 68-year lady, doesn't have to worry, I got to get out of here before it gets too dark. Do you hear me? Do you understand what I'm saying? What I'm saying is real simple. Help the brother that's trying to help the rest of us. We got his back. And if you play your cards right, we'll have your back. But if you don't play them right, clean out your desk in the morning, because your services are no longer needed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony, Brian Oliver.
I'd say, good evening to the city council. Members of Baltimore City, yes, my name is Brian Oliver. US Army Sergeant, retired, 100% disabled veteran, who was homeless for a very, very long time. Had a job, retired from social security, retired from the state of Maryland. Still homeless. And eventually, I was able to get an apartment, being out of, I heard someone talk about transitional housing. I now own my home. And that was a struggle. Struggle, and it shouldn't have been a struggle for someone like me. And there's someone like me, who may have be a woman with a child, who's in a homeless shelter, who has maybe a small income. But once, I heard the lady from the radio station say, that once you own something, you get pride within yourself. I was raised with that pride from my grandfather, who owned his home. I grew up, part of my life, in Copp, what is now called Coppin Heights. And if you notice, half of the neighborhood is gone. Coppin has bought up so much of the property and knocked down at least six different blocks. But didn't put anything across the bridge towards top side of Wallbrook Junction. Where on one side, you have homeowners, a lot of homes, everybody's in those homes, there's no drug dealers on those corners. But you come down the North Avenue side, Bradish Avenue, Ashburton, Poplar Grove. You got blight, you got empty houses. You got houses that the foundation is so well-done, a little bit of money, $60,000, maybe $25,000 could fix the house up. I joined the coalition with the Homes Program, because I advocate for disabled vets. I advocate, and I'm also sitting on the board of the Northwest Community Association, CRC. And they backed me up, and they let me represent them here today at this hearing. Because now, part of my life was spent in the Park Heights area. I live one block from Pimlico Racetrack. It is 18 empty houses in the two-block neighborhood that I live in, on Garrison Avenue. Homeowners in that neighborhood, because I represent the Silburne community, have asked me, do I have to move? And they've lived there for 30, 40 years. Because nothing has happened, except demolition. And now, we have high grass on an empty lot, Park Heights and Woodland. On the other side of the street, three blocks, where nobody lives, of empty houses that we could put people in. And I've written my delegate in the city, and I asked the mayor, do a walkthrough in my neighborhood. Because we're so close to Pimlico Racetrack, that you don't want people who go to affairs there and the track there to walk down Park Heights Avenue, Belvedere Avenue, and see the blight. Well, if you don't want them to see the blight, help us with the program that'll put homeless people in these houses that have incomes. I, most of the people, I ran around to different affairs and got so many sheets of people that afford this Dollar House program from my community, from five different communities. I'm talking about Garrison, Forest Park, Park Heights, Greenspring. I'm talking about these community leaders helped me get these signatures on the petition, so that we could bring here to this hearing, so that you could at least, at least think about how we could put this together. So that the shelters don't be overrun. Male shelters, female shelters, women and children, where you going to put them? Dollar House program, if they get social service, so what? If it costs them $25,000, so what? $150 a month for a mortgage? Because my house is done, is standing, it passes inspection? Now, I have a pride, I can raise my children in an active neighborhood? And when you have a neighborhood full of homeowners, there is no drug dealers, because we ain't going to stand for it. I already have the respect, believe it or not, of the criminal element in my community. Because I give them respect, they give it back to me. They won't do anything if I'm sitting on my porch, if my neighbor's sitting on her porch. Someone that knew about structural, I bought my house, as I said, I struggled. I bought my house, as I said, I struggled. Used the Vacant Values Program, but it took me 18 months because my credit score wasn't 620. I went broke for 18 months to build my credit score to 620, which being a disabled vet, I needed to get a lender to loan me the money to buy my home that's in between two empty houses. And both of them can be rehabbed. So somebody says structural, when these houses move, guess who else's house moved? Mine. I have to come out of my pocket. I'm on a fixed income. I have to take out a loan just to try to get some things fixed because of the weather, because of the houses when they sway back and forth. I might need something done to my windows. I'm so happy that my son has a license in home improvement. But he can't get a bid to do a job and hire 10 people that he has to work for him.
Understood. Sir.
This would just, I'm backing off. This would just give you a little bit of the area and what I think should be done and the program. I do agree with it, and I know for a fact, somebody like me, my mortgage is 606. I can buy two of them houses that I live next to for a dollar, and believe me, I can still pay the mortgage. Thank you.
Yeah, sir, I just wanted to thank you for your testimony for a couple reasons. One, you bring up the issue of homelessness in our city, which is a serious issue as we all recognize. The other thing that you lifted up, as a veteran, you know, I'm a son of two veterans. My mother was a disabled veteran before she passed away, so I understand that struggle, and I really appreciate you bringing that to the floor. Is Mr. Leo Burrows here?
Good evening, Councilman Bullock.
Good evening.
Chairperson and members of the Housing Committee. One thing that is readily apparent, and I'm here representing the Roots of Scouting organization, Roots of Scouting Incorporated. We're a community organization that focuses on meeting the needs of African-Americans particularly. We're a Pan-African group that prioritizes education, fair play, and justice. And I'm just so delighted that Tyrone boasts and homes, homeownership, opportunity, mentorship for economic success exists and that they're putting forth this challenge for the 21st century Dollar House program. I'm reminded, I wonder if you have the political will to do the right thing. Because you've inherited a legacy. You know, you've inherited 50 years, 60 years of doing nothing in regard to housing in this city fundamentally. This gentrification and tax incremental financing for very rich racist white folk has been going on a long, long time. And it's amazing that we haven't been organized well enough to put you out of office when you don't go along with what the community would have you do. And if we don't hold you accountable, today is the 25th of what month, October? By the 25th of October of 2018, Tyrone, that's a year from now. Amen. This program should be well underway with the support of the mayor, Catherine Pugh. The mayor's got all the horses in this city, doesn't she? She's got a whole lot of power. Well, she better come through because she lied when they talk about the $15 hour wage increase. She started off, she started off lying, so we want her to get with the program. Now, we're talking about an alternative to this program. Even if you don't agree with all of the, what has been put forth, what alternative do you offer the public? The people are here. And if we don't do something in a short period of time, we will be gentrified out of the city, so we won't be able to vote. We won't be here. Because our council, and this is not personal with me, whether I like you individually or not, because some of I like individually. But collectively, as a council, collectively under, I'm a registered Democrat, brother Bullock. Doesn't mean a damn thing. Being a registered Democrat and having the democratic political machine not meet the needs of the people is an outrage. Needless, needless to say that the Republicans are worth five cents. We understand that. So you've got to get on board. In closing, apprenticeship, job training, and placement programs. It's being emphasized over and over again. What's the mayor's office doing with regard to prioritizing that? You've got to, once you train people who have enough smarts, can read well enough to be trained for skilled trades, then you have to place them in jobs. This is an ideal program to facilitate making that happen. You gotta place them. And everybody standing on the corner is not dealing drugs. We have a disastrous circumstance. And I heard the representative, and I'll close, the representative from the city talk about the generosity of developers. What the hell does that mean? I heard one of the representatives get up here and she's talking about how generous the developers are. They're raking off, ripping off, port covving to notwithstanding, taking all the fruits, taking the money home, and you're talking about how nice the developers are. Access, access to capital is a question. And guess what? Redlining is still alive and well. I ask you, I plead with you, I beg of you. Get on board, work out the divisions, whatever you need. I'm gonna support you, I'll work with this group and any group. But we've got to set, we've got to be the lightning rod in this nation. Because every urban city in this country, through conspiracies, find themselves with thousands of abandoned houses. Don't tell me that's not by design. We've got to break out of that genocidal approach to people who want to live and have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let there be no doubt. Justice delayed is justice denied. And now is the time, and we damn well better make it work now or get these people out of office now. Governor, mayor, anybody who can't do it now, get rid of their behinds.
So Mr. Burrows, as always, I appreciate your candor. And I also appreciate your, I also appreciate the accountability piece because we know that we're accountable to the people and it's important for us to do so. One of the things that you see come across today is that we have to ask tough questions. We have to be diligent in our task. And also want to provide a little opportunity, I know Councilman Burnett wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, as we continue to move through testimony, to indicate, just in case there was confusion, that the program, the establishment of this program is not up for vote tonight. This is not, we're not voting to, and that's not directed to you, Mr. Burrows, per se, but just in listening to, and I appreciate you on the radio and you calling in. So as soon as I, but no, I just wanted to clarify to everyone here tonight that this committee, this body, is not voting yes or no to the Dollar House program. Now, I'm not saying that to say that you shouldn't hold us accountable, electors are important. All of us will be up for reelection in 2020. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that this is an informational hearing to discuss the issue, to get feedback from the community, which has been invaluable tonight. But I just also want to make sure we understand that this is a city council resolution. This is not a binding law. Well, I know you know, but I just, but I want to make sure that we put it out there so that folks don't sit at the end to wait to see if there's gonna be a yeary in a vote, because that's not what this hearing is. So I think it's important to just, to just make that point. Yeah, there's, so to clarify, there is, yeah, this is, again, to discuss the issue.
Mr. Chair, if I could just dovetail onto Councilman Burnett's remarks. The other thing to remember, and we do make a point of periodically sharing this at these kind of hearings, is that even if this were a bill in front of us to be turned into a law, that all we can do as the city council is we could say we want to create a program. And we could put that in the code. We cannot, on our own, put the money into the program to make the program work. This will require that the mayor buy into it and be willing to put money in the budget to do it. We could have all of us agree that this needs to be done and say so publicly. The mayor, the way the budget works in Baltimore, the mayor has to put that money in the budget for the program to happen. So I just say that to say that I'm not trying to shirk my duty, I'm not trying to duck accountability. I'm trying to say that you have a job ahead of you that is not just convincing us. It is also going to be crucial that the second floor of this building be on board.
Muslima Walker?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna try to keep it short, I will.
Can you pull the microphone down? Excuse me, can you pull the microphone down so we can hear you?
Oh, can you hear me?
Now, you got it.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So basically, I wanted to say, just touching on a couple of points is that it is important for you all to embrace the citizens of Baltimore. It's wholly unfair to have big developers who come here, put money up for different things, and then they go off to wherever they came from, their children go into private school, riding horses and whatever else it is that they do because their parents can't afford to. That there is a problem. I would also like to say that, well, I went to city. But we have MIRVO and we have Carver, from my understanding, those are vocational schools. Oh, the microphone. We have MIRVO and we have Carver and we have other places in Baltimore that are vocational schools. I think that it would be excellent if the people who are going to those schools, who are learning different trades, whether it be electrician, plumbing, or whatever, that you use some of these vacant properties in order for them to learn their trade. I feel as though that it's very important for a lot of the young men, as they said, that they're not on the corner slinging drugs. Some of them don't have anything to do, or they on their way to doing something sometimes. I'm very much for the Dollar program. When I was a little girl, growing up in Brookfield and White Lock with Katherine Mitchell and Murray Pat Clark came there, through with Clarence DeBurns and Kurt Schmoke. It was a lot of development, even though we had a lot of murders in the 90s. It was a good city. Baltimore was an awesome city. There was more people who fellowshiped and who got along, and it was just a good city, a good place to be in. You cannot keep giving our money, I'm tired of paying tax dollars for people coming in here, making racetracks and this, that, and the third. My children are not benefiting from any of the things that these other big developers are doing. For people who live in the city, the developers who are from here, they are more likely to put money into the city. Our city can grow, our city can prosper the way it's supposed to, instead of the money going off to other people. The last thing I would like to say is, in addition to the Dollar program for houses, we also need to have a Dollar program for people who would like to start a business on these corner houses, who would like to have a place to start a business because I'm getting too much trouble trying to get a $25 table on the corner of North Avenue and Harford Road. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thomas Price? Is Thomas Price here? No, is there Garrick Good? We're gonna go in order, and then once, we have a few more people, and then once we get to the end, if you want to testify, we'll do that. Yeah. Tara Carter?
Hello, good afternoon, evening, everyone.
Evening.
I've been in Baltimore City since I was nine years old, I'm 37 now.
Can you lift the microphone up so we can hear you?
I've been in Baltimore City since I was nine years old, so I pretty much grew up here. I'm 37 years old, so I've been here for 28 years. There, a lot of people have said a lot of things. As far as the housing, the Homes Program, I think this program is a good program. It gives people a lot of opportunity. A lot of times like now, a lot of reason now, these days, pardon me, I'm not a public speaker at all. But the young men and the young women in our city right now, a lot of them, some of them are selling drugs, some of them are standing on the corner, some of them aren't. A lot of them just don't have anything to do. But the reason, some of the reasons why they result to standing on the corners and doing the things that they have to do is because they are, their households are stressed. They don't have funds coming in. This program right here, if it could create affordable housing for a lot of people, it would create a lot less stress in our city, which would bring down the crime rate in our city because people wouldn't be so stressed. You wouldn't have single mothers or mothers, or even single fathers, because there are a lot of single fathers these days trying to take care of their children. You're trying to pay nine, 10, 11, 12, even $1,400 in rent. And a lot of these places in bad areas, there are a lot of slum lords. This program, okay, my initial plan was to start from the beginning. Okay, so as far as Baltimore City and the people that run our city, it's similar to running a household. You run a household, you have people who are in charge of finances and stuff like this. The household, you do not, you're not supposed to live above your means. If you have certain bills that need to be paid or certain responsibilities, they're put in order. As far as like the funding, as far as 700 million is supposed to be for tearing down houses or stuff that's really not available. If this is a good program and if this is something that could help a lot of people and make our city better, then it would be awesome. Granted, all of the things may not be worked out as far as what money comes from where. Make it happen, make it work. When you're running a household, you have to make stuff work. Okay, so I have this, I have this, these are more important. If you're a part of, if you're a part of the city and the household, the top head household of the city, make it work, figure it out. We have a lot of smart people that are getting paid a lot of money to do smart things. Let's do it. So as far as funding, I'm pretty sure that can be figured out as far as the allocation of money for this program. Let's see. People being able to afford homes, there are a lot of people that would love to afford homes. Matter of fact, I have a cousin right now who is living in deplorable conditions right now because she chooses to allow, to pay for her children to go to private school. Yes, she gets scholarships so she doesn't have to pay the full price, but she's living in deplorable conditions because she can't afford housings, the vacant the value. Okay, as far as the program you were speaking about, as far as housing or whatever early, if you're still beating the drum, you're gonna keep beating the drum or try to tap into something new that might have more possible, better outcomes. Thank you. And it's like, okay, so, let's see, mentorship. As far as like the people, I'm also, I'm not only just a citizen of Baltimore, I am in the construction field, but I'm not here on that platform for that, I'm not concerned about that. I care about my city and I love my city. And there are a lot of young men and women, I've even found jobs for a couple of people that I run into. I talk to people all the time and all day long. I've pulled guys from off of the corner, selling drugs, and pulled them to jobs, to work. A lot of these young men and women are willing to go to work. A lot of them want off of the streets. But sometimes they have to do what they have to do in order to feed their families so that they can keep a roof over their head. This program right here could solve, if worked out properly and figurated, can solve a lot of problems in our city. Who wouldn't want to be able to pay three to five, even if it's not $300, $500 in mortgage towards something that you own and not to put money into someone else's pocket? Usually, when you have situations like that, people work harder and take better care of things that belong to them versus not belonging to them. So this program has a lot, a lot of definite good things. And as far as like the incarceration, people coming from incarceration, it could be a program where they volunteer to learn a trade. Instead, everyone doesn't have money to go to school. Instead of learning a trade or paying for a trade school where... Instead of learning a trade or paying for a trade school where there's really no on-the-job training, they teach you a lot of book stuff and technical stuff, but they don't teach you the stuff that's on-the-job training. I was blessed to learn from my father, heating and air conditioning, so I've had all on-the-job training and it's awesome. These young men who want to do better, they could sign up as a volunteer, there are many corners, aspects, they can volunteer to do work on these houses. So that's not money that has to be paid by anyone. There are many ways that this can be worked to work for everyone and just be a blessing to everyone. Let's see, have I touched on everything? I've said a lot, but as far as like the children, there are people working, yes, the volunteers, the incarcerated, people incarcerated. When they get out, a lot of people don't, I have a young man who I grew up with who's been in jail for seven years. He's made a bad, he's made bad decisions in his life when he was younger, being young and dumb, you know, a lot of people make bad decisions until you grow up and you learn and then you, when you know better, you do better. There's not, there's not a lot of know better out here. There's a lot of people that want to know better, but they don't know how to do better. And this program is one of the things that could assist with that. If a mother could go home and be able to stay home with her children and not work two jobs, then their education might be better. They might not miss as many missed homework days or projects because that parent is able to stay home to tend to her family because she's not worrying about, oh, where am I gonna get this money to pay this mortgage or to pay this bill? You're paying $1,100, $1,200, even $900 and can't afford the BGE. So then your lights get cut out, then you have people dying. This program right here would solve a lot of problems, even if it, if it couldn't be opened up on a wide variety, even if it started out as a, on a small scan, I calculated, even though these numbers may not be correct, but $700 million for 7,000 homes, $1,000 per home to fix it up. It was 21, where are my calculations, 21, $2,100,000 a month if that was the case. For a year, that's 25,200,000. That money could go towards schooling or different things because you're putting one thing in and you're getting it back. It could be flipped to put towards, you know, the next set of houses, however it could be worked, but I'm definitely an advocate for this program and I think that it could definitely work. The Vacants to Value program, I've heard a lot of bad things about that. If there are programs that are in place that are clearly not helping people and a lot of these people don't have money to get loans and stuff like that, that's a big problem. So you have to wait 18 months like this gentleman did. He had to wait several months to get a credit score. If this program could front money for people who wanted to do better, then it could benefit a lot of people and help a lot of people and also make our city better. And we could, Baltimore is what, known for having the, one of the highest murder rates even compared to New York City? And we're like, what, an eighth compared to New York City, Baltimore City is, but our murder rate is the highest. Imagine what we could show the world just by putting great things in place to help our people, to make our people better. Our murder rate was such and such, now it's dropped down significantly. I'm gonna end this.
All right.
Thank you. Everyone have a blessed evening.
Thank you for your presentation. Reverend Annie Chambers? Annie Chambers, is she here?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I know you are, come on up. All right. And if someone wants to hand her one of the mics, that's, yeah, that's, that's even better.
Thank you very much. And good evening to everybody.
Hold on one second, let me make sure the mic is on for you.
Hold on. Well, what?
They're turning it on for you.
It's on now, just.
It should be on.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, put the mic.
You can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me roll over.
All right, that's, it's, it's.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Reverend Annie Chambers now, not Annie Chambers. That means that I have elevated and gotten better. So please always address me as Reverend Annie Chambers. It was written on the paper, young man.
As we said the first time, but I actually didn't hear you, then said it again, but that's fine. Reverend Chambers.
You didn't hear me?
No, I said.
My name is Reverend Annie Maxine Chambers.
I hear you.
When Annie Chambers was out here, she would have told you something else, young man, but I'm elevated to a higher stand. Right, Mr. Henry?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Your daddy know. All right. I wanted to come here tonight for a special reason. Reverend Chambers is 76 years old and I've been out here 52 years in this struggle. I remember when Vale to Bacon came in place. I was the president of scattered site housing for 18 years. And in those years, we tried as public housing tenants to own our own homes. Y'all don't want me to tell you what it was about? Really, you don't want me to tell you what your program was about? None of us got to own a home because if we got over one hurdle, another hurdle came. And it kept coming and coming, you know? Some of us was even paying $1,300 a month to live in scattered site. So we certainly could afford to buy a house and some of us did leave and buy houses in the private market. But I didn't leave. I continued to fight and continue till this day. Now, I've been in Baltimore now, out of my lifetime, for 64 years. I'm the mother of 25 children, 350 grandchildren, so I still have to fight. Okay? I still gotta fight and I want y'all to know that the reason I'm fighting and down here for this program today, because I don't usually come down here, because there's very few of y'all I have any faith in. Now, Murat, I still like you. Okay? I still like you, but there are very few of y'all I got any faith in because I've heard about you, seen you and watched your program. Now, you know, some people threaten that if you didn't do the right thing, they'd get you out. I've been working to get you out because I have not seen much faith in this city council. I don't sense, and you know, me and that man used to fight a long time, Schaefer, Wem Donald Schaefer, we used to have big fights, but I have not seen much since he's been gone to happen for people in this city. I have not seen much change. Now, we talking about just letting people, don't you know if you own, take ownership, and I teach this in public housing, because that's where I still live, I live in Douglas Homes now, and I teach that in public housing to tenants, take ownership of your court. Do not allow the dealers to come in and nobody comes in Dallas coat and sell nothing, not even a cigarette. Because I say, this is where I got to live. You gotta have respect for me. I come from Gifford Avenue, Greenmount, Barclay, that's where I lived. But wherever I was, people knew that I was out there fighting and so they had respect. We have to talk about, look, keep on talking about our houses is not worth. Let me tell you something. Bob Emery was housing commissioner, see, I'm going back to let y'all know, that, some of those shells were built into rehab housing. Some of those shells were built into rehab housing and we had, not the developers came in, but contractors right here in this city rehab those houses. It's a plan. It's a plan that the city has going as far down as it is. This is a plan. See, I know that this is our city and we better take ownership, but we got to do more than talk to y'all and you're right. We got to first get a right mayor, get somebody that really care and talk about how we're gonna change. We got to get some people on the city council that really got heart, that really care about their community. Because, let me tell you, they may get us out and then all of y'all are gone. All of you are gone because your districts, if you look how they're gonna re-district the districts coming up, you got to understand that. So all of y'all will be gone. You understand? We got to, we got to fight for this program. You know, the mayor make the decision, you go to the mayor and you tell her why she have to make the decision to allow this program to go through. It depends on her not being a one-time wonder. You tell Katherine I said that, that it's, depends on her not being a one-time wonder. She've already told some lies and we ain't gonna forget them. So don't allow us to have a program if we can have a home somewhere decent to raise our children, somewhere decent that poor and working class people in this city can take homeownership. People used to wash their steps, clean all around their house, you understand, the whole neighborhood and the children at a certain time to come in the house and people weren't on the corners and people, I'm still not scared to be out here at night, but there are some people that scared to be out at night. People didn't have those problems, people didn't even lock. I moved on Gifford, well, I squatted on Gifford Avenue first. Yes, I squatted in one of Baltimore City houses night. I want to tell y'all rehabbed at that too and moved in with me and all my children and I lived there for four years before you gave me a lease. Okay? But I'm saying to you, people cared and took whole of their communities and cared about their community. You know why the crime rate and everything so bad? Because people, because our elected officials, we don't get the same services. They tell you, if you want the police come, you gotta really push and keep calling. Well, go up in Bolton Hill and go up in, you know, the upper part of Reservoir here, see do they push? You know, go some of the other places, go down there off of Broadway and see do they push? They call the police, the police come. They call they want certain alleys cleaned up and they're cleaned up. Well, we used to do those things by ourselves and we weren't homeowners, but we wanted our community right. But so now we get less service, the trash don't get picked up, what is this, one-day trash service? And then them ugly nasty green trash cans sitting out in front of everybody's house. That's a disgrace. That make the city look bad. And so we're talking about homeownership, taking home of our own homes. That's what we want. We have, if, if, look, you can't even buy, you can't even live in the worst areas, go on Greenmount Avenue. Do you know, I've worked and I'm still an advocate and I'm still out here working right now, and there are families on Greenmount Avenue paying $1,300 a month rent. Greenmount Avenue, Baltimore City Jail sit right across the street, the penitentiary on the other side. But these people, that's all they can get. So if they can pay that, why can't they own a home? You understand? Tell me why they can't own a home? You got, tell me what's not feasible. I remember when Gay Street was a nice big court and now you see you can't, they got that little area where you can't walk through. Remember them little houses used to cost $25 a month? Now you can't even walk, you walk through the street, people won't know what you want. Why are you on their street? These are the things we are talking about, they take home ownership. Give us the same opportunity. Y'all go to the mayor and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Chambers. Diane Corbett?
I'm here to support homes and I'm also a resident of Baltimore City. A lot of people here that might work for Housing Authority might not have lived in Baltimore City. I lived in Baltimore all my life. The area I came from was called the Greater Wallbrook Area. My community was called Mount Howley. We was right over from Windsor Hills Community. I lived on the east side and I lived in northwest Baltimore, which now they call it southwest Baltimore, but it was called northwest when I lived there. And I also came from the great part of Pennsylvania Avenue. My grandfather had a store right on Lafayette. We lived across the street from the store. I have seen the area when it was at its best, I have seen the area when it's not at its best. We always talk about how we love our children and I look around and say, we can't love our children when we have so many vacant houses and we don't even talk about the houses that are owned by the banks and Baltimore City can't even get a hold of those. And then you have homes that were let base and the judge made the landlord not rent them no more to people because the landlord didn't want to take the let out. So you have all these problems here and, but we always blame the victim. They didn't own the house, they was just renting the house. In order for us to get back as a community, we always say that we love this city. I love this city just like everybody else. I really do. I have a grandson that will be 12 next month. I have a son that just turned 42 a couple of weeks ago. He has some trouble and I'll tell it. It seemed like to me every time something come about, now it's a crisis, we had a crisis with drugs before, I mean, in the 70s, I was still in high school. We had, and our sons had came home from Vietnam, I worked at the post office in high school and I left my job because the veterans had to come back to get the job. I was probably been still there retiring from the post office, but we had to give up our positions because the veterans coming home. And when they came home, my mom, my grandmother now, were saying, we have a crisis here in our community, nobody heard about it. Same thing now, we have a crisis in our community with housing, nobody wants to listen to us. I guess if Mr. Bolson was a white man, came with the plan, and I have to be very honest and that's the way I am. I know it's just a hearing, everybody would have been backing him up, just not Murray Pat Clark. Murray Pat Clark has been out there for years. I called into a radio station when I first met Murray Pat and she was the president of the city council back there and she told me that us as African-Americans don't write, don't call, but the people that do, she said her and her staff take time out, a day out of a week, I will never forget that, and she said they would go through the letters that people wrote and she said some people didn't write good letters and she said, but they would go through it and find out what the people really trying to say and she would call them and they would give her clarity what she was, what they wanted in their community. We as African-Americans want the same thing that everybody else want. Yes, the crime rate is high and the reason it is high, because nobody have a plan to combat the problem. They don't want to listen to the grassroots people that, right there, Mr. Bolson, he's a grassroots. Although he owns his business, that's grassroots. When you want to come in to help the city out and the citizens want it and the citizens are tired of seeing this blank in their community, we don't want the developers come and just tear down a house and then we have to wait for a developer to come. I didn't see grass grow up, I didn't see where people say, okay, green parks, I love parks, don't get me wrong, but people can't live in a park. They cannot live in a park when it's, when it's, the weather is the way it was, when we have, blizzards, whatever, they can't live in a park. Decent, affordable houses, why can't we have the same thing? People want the same thing, we all the human, God made us that way, we just differentiate. That's all, we just differentiate, he made us all human beings and we, I mean, the worst thing is that we treat each other badly and then we try to say, well, we Christians. Sometimes I wonder, are we really Christians? Because we got too many people out here that would like to, you know, be homeowners, really, they really would, they would like to be. They would like to be. And when that dollar home came, I was in high school. I came out in seventy-five. I was in high school when the dollar program came along, and I saw the difference. Their communities were just like our communities now. They were just like boarded up and everything. Look at it now. Look at the harbor, the harbor. When I came along, the harbor, you, you went down there to go to the fish market, but it was blank. It was where, empty warehouses. Look at it now. Same thing can happen in our communities. You want to get rid of the crime? Start doing stuff.
Thank you. No, I appreciate your testimony. Dr. Jawad Abdullah?
Good evening, Councilman and Councilwoman Clark. I am Dr. Jawad Abdullah. I came to Baltimore in seventy-four. I'd be brief as much as I could. I came as eighteen, and since then I've worked my way to this day to getting a doctorate at Morgan State University. In the seventies, there was a dollar program here in the city for which I was given one of the houses. However, there was, there were two finalists, and I opted to gift the other brother because he had a wife and, who had just died, and he had children. So, I was single at the time. I said, you go ahead with that. It turned out I went to Morehouse in Atlanta, and I was blessed with a dollar house in Atlanta. And I want to say here that these houses could be transformed. We don't have to create something out of the blue. There are wheels already created, no, no, no sense in trying to recreate them. There are programs in Cincinnati. I can speak to my own experience in Atlanta whilst attending Morehouse. It's the best dollar I spent in America. I ironed that dollar because it gave me freedom. It gave me confidence to know that I was capable of transforming a unit. When I left Baltimore, there were land rents that my friends were paying. I went to Atlanta and I said, no, this dollar you spend, you have both house and land. So I used the land to plant food. I use, I was a street vendor, selling on Howard Street before I moved to Atlanta. Atlanta sell down on Pe, on Peachtree Street. I used my fireplace to cook and to stay warm in the winter. I used the fire station to get water and had a bucket and stood up and bade until I eventually got a, a pipe born running water. This could be done. The idea that we don't have money and, you know, it, it, one week was sheet rock, another week was two-by-four. Another week meant that I bought a gallon of paint. You know, my, my, my neighbors used to laugh when I first moved in there with a machete to chop the lawn. I went down and chopped the lawn. But after two years, I had a thorough lawn mower, rear bagger lawn mower. Patience is virtuous, and if we be patient with what we have, use what we have, we can certainly get what we need. On my way here today, I saw a woman with two children sitting at the old Greyhound station on Center Street, homeless. And not too far away was some rats running in the same drain. This is what we have come to Baltimore City. I came to Baltimore, people were cleaning their steps, their white steps. I'm currently the vice president of the Whittaker Association. We, I'm on the steering committee of the Copen Heights Development Corporation, where the, the grabber plan was issued to improve the West Avenue corridor. And in that, I've used my engineering experience to help with those development efforts. Mr. Clark, our president, had for years as a retired Amtrak worker, built a garden. Do we know of Concord grapes growing on North Avenue? Well, yeah, that's in his garden. He takes it and donated to the, the, um, the, the charity that, uh, provides food for people who can't get around and in wheelchairs. So these are things that we can certainly do in Baltimore, being a community. I can see from the community response here, this is touch a nerve within our community. And as President Kennedy has said, just as we do, I'm currently a state engineer, that the, the community need to be con, con, uh, uh, confronted whenever there are developments to take place. This highway to nowhere, you bust up the neighborhoods, and the, the communities are transformed thereafter. So whenever there's a, a, a big development ought to take place, what you're doing here, I commend the effort in, in getting the, the public to get their input into whatever decisions we make going forward. But as I said earlier, this can work. I encourage you all and motivate everyone to, to see that, to put whatever effort forward to ensure that this program has some bite. I wrote this, this, what I'm speaking of, to two former mayors, and it, it fell on deaf, deaf ears. So I commend the city council for presenting this forum that the community can vent, that they know of the need. These houses have merit. We have structural engineers can come in and determine if the house could be rehabbed, retrofitted, and in so doing, we have the skill set. Cincinnati have these same brothers coming out of the prison. I was former, I'm running through a lot of stuff here, former thirteen years in Baltimore City Police Crime Lab, and for four years going on the street in, in Cherry Hill and running across young men, double homicides, day after day after day. And I was encouraged to write to the mayor, saying, hey, mayor, we have all these empty houses. We can transform our community. It fell on deaf ears. So I'm praying and hoping that now you all pay some attention to the people who have spoken before me and those who come thereafter me, that this program needs to get going. We have spiraling homelessness, and we have to want for our brother and sister what we want for ourselves. I can't go away and knowing this exists and, and don't do anything about it. My phone is bugging off the hook because my children, I got to go pick them up. Thank you for your time. Have a blessed evening.
Thank, thank you, sir, for your time. We appreciate it. I know we have several people who want to testify, but Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, I know the hour is getting late and people are drifting out, and, um, I wonder if it would be all right if we took a vote now and, um, then go on, like we often do when things like that happen, and then go on to, um, um, hear from the rest of the, it's a resolution, so everyone knows it, it's just a message that we're asking the committee and the council to make, to the, to the city, the mayor and all. But I would just wonder, as a courtesy to me, as a, I'm not leaving, but courtesy to me and to, um, the people that I know are starting to drift, especially, um, the leader of the gang, who I, I know has to leave. If we could please, um, have a vote, whether you want to vote it up or down, I would ask my colleagues to please vote for this resolution. I think the support is strong in the community and the willingness to work with the agencies, which, um, have expressed an interest in coming, meeting the, the community halfway, I mean, more than halfway, but to really sit down and see if we can get this together. So, Mr. Chairman, that, that would be my request, if I'm, I'm not a member.
I'm happy to move the resolution favorably.
I, I would say what I'd, what I'd rather do is, because we have one of our colleagues who's not here, and we recognize, no, I'm talking about our vice chair. Yeah, so I would rather have unanimous support for it. You noticed that even in terms of it being sponsored, we have unanimous support. But I think also, there may be some, some language that could be added to this resolution based upon the testimony we heard tonight from some of the advocates in addition to the city agencies. And I know there was discussion about potential pilots and things like that, so I'd rather have some language that might be a little bit more structured that we could actually use in moving forward. So I'd rather leave it open and have more conversation to come back to, have a voting session on it.
Mr. Chairman, I, with all due respect, sir, we are planning to move ahead, um, of course. We'd love to have the blessing of this committee. If we can't, then, and or if it'll be delayed, like whenever, with your kindness, I'm just going to say, if you won't take a vote, the vote's been voted, and we have to move ahead. And, um, we know you're not against it.
Certainly.
We think you're not against it.
Certainly not against it.
But we, so we know that the city leaders in housing and all, and the mayor will understand that you haven't actually voted against it. And I guess if that's what we have to take away, that's what we have to take away, we will go forward.
Mr. Chair, did, if, did you want to respond?
No, I was gonna, I, I was gonna call for Travis Robertson, who was next to testify.
I, I, I was just gonna say that, um, as we have said on a couple occasions tonight, this is a resolution. This just expresses the will of the body. And, and so, as, you know, I think the sponsor pointed out, it's, or you, I'm sorry, the chair pointed out, that it's unanimously cosponsored by the whole council, and when it comes out on second reader, everyone on the council will get a chance to vote for it again. If there's additional language that conveys specific intent that would be important to, um, actually do the program, there will need to be subsequent legislation to create the program. And that language could be in subsequent legislation, which we would have plenty of time to craft the exact wording of. So I, I'm just throwing out the possibility that we could simply move forward with essentially saying, yes, we think we should develop a dollar house program, which is what this resolution says. And then we couldn't worry about making sure that all the details line up and all the details are straight in the actual bill that would still be to come.
Yeah, I mean, or if you want to write a, if you want to write some amendment or something, we could do it on second reader. We could, I, I'll work with you, and we'll put it in as an amendment on second reader. If I'm, if we walk away from here tonight without the vote of this committee, we know you're not voting against it, but then we'll consider it, we've had a good discussion, and, and we're moving on to work with, hopefully with the mayor's office and the agencies. So.
I just want us to be clear that we need to make sure that we are being pragmatic with this, that we're moving something that can move forward. So I'm supportive, but we can, we can have, we can have the vote. But again, I don't want folks to have a higher expectation than what we're able to deliver. And I want to make sure that we're very clear on this, and that this is not legislation that we're voting on tonight. That this is a resolution, and we're talking about how do we move forward and develop a program. So again, I want folks to be very clear, crystal clear on that.
Could we have a vote?
What, what I, uh, what I wanted to say, what I wanted to say is that twen- twenty, twenty years ago in the nineties, I had applied to the city for two vacant building that has been vacant since in the seventy-something. And I had to come in here, this is my third visit here, in, in forty-six years. I am asking the city to allow us or give us two adjacent property, and don't ask us to show us no two-hundred thousand dollars. Don't ask us that, because we don't have it. We can go to our community and say, the city, give us a building for our, um, to study or practice our culture, our church, our, whatever it is, and they take it from there. They asked me to do three things. I did two out of three, but when it comes to the two-hundred thousand dollars, I, I, I couldn't make it. The city took it back when Copen became a university in two thousand and three. And they said, oh, the city need the money. They sold each of the building for ten thousand dollars. One was repaired partially, and the other building is still, fifty years later, and it's still dilapidated condition. And it could have been better off, paying taxes, light bill, everything. Thank you for your time.
All right, um, thank you so much, sir. Recarot Tyson? Yes, Travis Robertson was called. Okay, you want to come forward? I'm sorry. Then followed by Recarot Tyson.
Yes, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Travis Robertson, minister, educated law student, real estate investor, activist and advocate. You know, real true economic development and community development matters. Real true affordable housing matters. Home ownership in East and West Baltimore matters. This program and initiative will help increase the value of neighborhoods in this city, communities in this city, and the entire city of Baltimore. Look at the revenue that will be able to come in through the BGE bills, Accurate Real True Water Bills, and taxes. If you fix up the city of Baltimore, hopelessness will leave and the crime rate will decrease. Black folk, don't get mad when I say this. Start saving your money, fix your credit, so you will be able to have that six-twenty-six, forty-six, fifty credit score, so nobody gives you a problem when it comes down for you to get these properties. Yes, Councilman Cohen, this program needs to be open to the residents of Baltimore City. The residents need, again, need to start saving their commission checks, saving their bonuses, and their, um, the income, that, it starts saving the almighty income tax checks that you will be getting next year. The working class, those people that are working, need to be able to become homeowners, the same way that y'all providing for, um, other people like under armor to get TIPS and, and to get other things. East and West Baltimore needs to be fixed up. Now, I, we voted you in, Mr. Bullock, because we want Pete Walsh out. We got him out, and we put you in office because we thought that you would be a great councilperson. So we asking that you work with Ms. Mary Cat Clark to get this initiative done. Um, I'm a real estate investor. All we need is the houses. Pay for clear and clean, free of liens and past water bills. I think the city needs to work with, you know, if, if a house has a lien or a past water bill, I think that the city of Baltimore needs to work on, um, eliminating that water bill or that lien on that property, so it won't be a problem with the title company and getting that property. And lastly, black contractors matter. In a city that's sixty-five, seven percent black and brown people, African-American, give the people what they want and need. They need housing. Don't give these properties to big developers. Give them to residents of the city of Baltimore and local investors that really care about the community. Give them to churches. Give these properties to churches, give them the opportunity to buy the properties, the house, the homeless and people that are less fortunate, and so that they can create community development corporations. Meq and other financial partnerships, Meq and other financial partners need to also partner. Vaking the value needs to be the new Dollar House program. That's what it needs to be. We got to fix this city up. You already had a district, in your district, District Eight, houses falling on people. If you go up to sixteen-hundred block of, no, it's sixteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred block of Baltimore Street, a whole building fell down. That's right around the corner from where you live it, right? So, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we have to invest in the community, the same way people, and now, y'all giving opportunities for the Poppleton Rehab District, where I used to live, in the fourteen-hundred block of Fayette Street. But I'm saying, you have to invest in the community. And I promise you, if you invest in the community, you're going to see a decrease in crime, you're going to see the rate of hopelessness go, you will see the rate of people being hopeful go up, and hopelessness going to leave. I mean, I mean, anybody in this room, when, when you look at Penn North and you look at, you know, um, Pennsylvania Avenue and North, and you look at their community with all those vacant houses in it, it's just, it's just sad. It is sad. But if you offer people in their community the opportunity to buy a house, offer them the opportunity to have something of their own, the, the ultimate opportunity to be able to do something for themselves, they're going to take pride in their community? They're going to come out and wash their steps like we used to do in the fifteen-hundred block when there was the Afro Clean Block, and we won three times? They're going to do that. But if you, but if you're not doing anything, and you're just coming, I'm not saying y'all doing that, but if you're just coming in here, leaving, coming in here, leaving, coming in here, leaving. in here, leaving, every two weeks getting a paycheck and putting the money in MeQ or whatever bank account y'all have every two weeks, that ain't never gonna get done. You gonna see murders go up. But once you invest in our young black men and women and invest in their mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, you gonna see a difference in the city of Baltimore. God bless y'all.
Bless you too. You make a, a great point in talking about investing in our communities and the fruit that's born when we invest in our communities. So, I appreciate all your comments. Recarrie Tyson, thank you so much. We only have one more person who's listed after you, so go.
Good evening. Um, I'm not here representing any organizations or anything like that. I'm just a twenty-five-year-old Baltimore City resident that has seen the, the community fall apart. Like, you can't expect for people, the people that spoke from the Homes Program, they're not here just saying they want to own property in Baltimore City. They're saying they want a chance to make Baltimore City a community. That is the key thing that everybody who stood up here has mentioned, community. If you do not have that in the inner workings of a community, which are resources for people to support themselves, which are also resources for people to live in their communities, then everything will crumble. Everything is dismantled because there is no community. If, people need to be able to work and support themselves. This, this woman's got a paper from the Homes Community and spoke about young men being able to work in their communities, learn a trade, and take care of them and their families. When you boil all of this down and everybody has discussed tonight, it seems to me like we're asking for the council and the mayor and the city of Baltimore to grant us the opportunity to be a community. We shouldn't have to stand here and ask for that. That, that, that just seems like something that should be given, especially if you want it. Now, I could see if you were, you were among a, a whole city of people, what it may seem like, a whole city of people that just didn't give a damn. But you have a whole, you have a, a large group of people that came out here tonight just to express the fact that they want to be a part of a community. Some people didn't even get up here and speak about dilapidated housing and how they wanted to buy a whole block. Some people just got up here and spoke about how they wanted to be a part of this, just because they knew they had something to offer and they know that the resources that will come from this can change the, the, the avenue that the city is going down. I just want anybody who, who listen here tonight, if this program does come forth, offer and continue to, to pour these opportunities out into these, to these communities for these young people, because we really need them. We really need them. And, and if you are on the council and you heard anything out here tonight, understand that if you do not give people an opportunity to be a part of community, everything is gonna continue to trickle down, everything. It, it's not just about where you live, it's about how are you a part of something? If I pay, like the lady said previously, if I pay thirteen hundred dollars a month in rent, what do I get from that? I don't even get a chance to have my, my children grow up in a place that seems like I'm paying thirteen hundred dollars a month for it. That's unfair. That's inhumane. Some of the living conditions that I've witnessed in this city are inhumane. This program will give, will not only put, like I said, people in position to be a part of community, but it will also put the city in a position to hold some of the landlords accountable for the deplorable conditions that some of these residents live in, because they will be directly tied to the city through this program. You have a lot of landlords that have LLCs that these, these houses are under, and you can't even find them. The house that fell on that nine-year-old little boy that was walking home from school, you couldn't even find that landlord. That's not okay. That's not community. If, if my child's walking home from school and, 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 and he gets hurt, you don't even know who to blame. The houses and the buildings, because commercial property is also a big part of this, this problem too. The houses and the buildings in this city should not be so separated from the, the, the places where they are, that you don't even know who's connected to them. That's, that's not okay. I'm asking anybody who heard anything that anybody said here tonight to remember one thing, community. And if you do not have that, you have absolutely nothing in this city. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Dana Denson? Is Dana Denson here? I see, I see two more people.
Hello, everyone. Hello, committee. I'm coming to speak, I guess, from a different demographic than everyone else here. I work two fifty West Pratt Street in the Pandora Building. I guess I'm what you call a little richer than broke, where I can't qualify for any type of assistance programs, as I guess what, SNAP and food stamps, but I also can't qualify for a house. I have applied for many health initiatives, the Smart Buy Initiative. I applied because I have the debt-to-income issue due to student loans. I also have a seven hundred credit score. Still cannot be approved for a house. So, I just came here because the Dollar House program is pretty much my last option. I'm college educated, going for a master's, where you see that the population of Baltimore is decreasing, because for people like me, educated, median income, why would I want to stay here? This city offers me nothing. And you talk about the decrease in population, but when I look out my window of the eleventh floor, I see the Brazuto Group on Light Street building these super high, super expensive that no one can afford to live in, well, I can't afford to live in, and I'm a majority of the people in Baltimore. You have Elon Musk coming to make his fast train or trying to do that, and Scott Plank trying to buy all of Holland's Market. But someone like me who just wants to buy one house to live in and not worry about my neighbors, where I live at now, they look at me as the gentrifier. They want me out the neighborhood because they see people like me and it's like, why are you here? And it's like, well, where I'ma go? I can't afford to go anywhere else. So, why stay here? I mean, I guess the city isn't for me, it's for, you know, people that you want to pork covenant, how much ever money you said you would give to Amazon, all the people down at City Cafe and all the software companies. If that's what the city's for now, then say that. If you want to make Baltimore Brooklyn, say that. But this is kind of my last option before I bid Baltimore due, and y'all can have it. So, that's it.
I want to say, thank, thank you for your testimony, but also, no, that, that Baltimore is for all of us, and we want you here, we want everyone else to be here and take advantage of the opportunities that should be for the people who are here as well. So, I want you to understand that, that message was heard loud and clear. I saw two other people who raised a hand. Yes, sir. Can you please state your name for the record?
I'm a member of the Homes Coalition.
What's your name, sir?
Cleveland Ham, H-A-M.
Okay.
A whole lot of, Councilman Bullock, city council members, and everybody that has came out to support the Homes Coalition tonight. A whole lot has been said tonight, and I'd just like to, just touch on a couple of things that's been said. And I'd like to say something on something that was not said, mentioned. A lot of the blighted communities, all these vacant homes and the rundown properties, a lot of them are owned by big developers, out, you know, outside landlords, absentee landlords, and, um... Yeah, yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying that to say, a lot of developers...
Make sure we, just one person at a time and speak to the microphone. We're almost there.
So, all the blight, it's not just the people living in the communities, as, you know, it's, you know, these landlords. I mean, when you stop and look at how many properties even, one of our statements, Jared Kushner owns right here in Baltimore, that's dilapidated, that's rundown, and that's, you know, all these slum lords. Well, you know, what we're talking about doing is, when Mr. Boz mentioned the, the initiative that, that kind of like birthed the Homes Corporation, Coalition, it was the seven hundred million dollars that was allotted to the boarding up of houses and green space and tearing these houses down. And so far, we were just trying to encourage accountability for that budget. That's the one thing we wanted to encourage accountability, and, and the, and the plan that Homes has come up with is our, our, um, way of saying that it can be done, and if we're accountable, and if the money is, if that money should happen to be used for the purpose that it was given, then it would be a win-win situation for everybody, for the, for the working-class citizens in Baltimore, for the Baltimore City, for the communities. Everybody would win, even, it would even increase the tax basis. And it would, you know, instead of just boarding up the houses and making green spaces, we would be making, you know, homestead in communities. It would also increase the tax basis, and the other added thing to this that we haven't spoke much about is the mandate that this organization puts on apprenticeship programs, not just hiring contractors, but hiring people who are standing on the corners, people who have potential and skills but aren't given the opportunity because they have a prison record or whatever the situation may be. Giving them an opportunity to become, you know, gainfully employed, to get a skill under the, a trade under the belts, and to let people who, a lot has been said that we tear out on our own communities, let the people in the community who wants to build it up, give us the opportunity to, you know, help build it up to where, you know, we can kind of like, when you talk about the riots, make some rights, some wrongs right, you know, in a sense, because, you know, instead of going outside, when you got all the skills here, and with these out-of-town developers and big corporations, you know, embrace us as an organization to work along with, so that we can get some of this stuff. And most of the people in Homes are not Baltimore City residents. I grew up in Baltimore, from South Baltimore, right where Raven Stadium is, back in the fifties, sixties, primarily cold, and now I'm in Howard County. But I've been through it all, and I've seen how they take the communities and, you know, eminent domains, and they have these plans for the, uh, different communities, and the city have their ten, fifteen, twenty-year projection for what they're gonna do here and there. And a lot of people get displaced in their communities, and they can't afford to go somewhere and wind up living in, you know, housing that they can't afford. So, give us a chance to let the people who live in these areas, who grew up in these areas, whose roots are in these areas, let them have a place called home. It's been given to people so many times, promised to people in different communities, that they can have, they can become homeowners in these communities, from, from the city to Howard County, it's all been the same thing, promising the citizens that you can become homeowners, and then snatching it right from underneath of them. And it's not, it's not fair to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Andrea Palam.
This is our last testimony, so...
Last in Mohicans. I just wanted to touch on what I've experienced...
Sorry, give me your name again, I'm sorry.
Andrea Palam. I'm a mother, I'm a dental hygienist and a future homeowner. I have not yet been as lucky to own my own house yet. I just wanted to touch on what I recently went through trying to apply for the Vacants for Value program. And even with the initial application, I was kind of stopped. I do appreciate, I think I spoke with Mr. Tutte, Howard Tutte, from the Housing, Baltimore Housing Program at Vacants for Value, and he let me know what my application needed. He let me know what else I needed to bring to the table. And what I thought was just alarming is the amount of money that I had to show proof of before my application would even be accepted or looked at. So, those are just some barriers that I've came across, and this was just very recent. And I wanted to know what will differ with the Vacants to Value program versus the Dollar program. I just wanted to know what would differ. I, I just want to own one house, you know, I just, or maybe two, me and my kids. But I found it alarming when I heard the other lady testify earlier that developers and other people are buying rows and rows and rows and rows of houses, and, and, and they didn't have to pay for them. I just want one. I just want one, and I don't, I don't understand why I have to show two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars in my bank account just to, to fix that one. And that's all I wanted to touch on. Thank you so much.
No, I want to thank you for raising that question, and this is one of the things that we'll have to iron out in terms of dealing with housing and talk about where some of the challenges are with the current program, and if there's a pilot of what that looks like, or what those details would be. So, thanks for, for bringing that to the fore. I know there are also a number of people who might have, the sheet wasn't out for you to testify, but if you do want to speak, we will provide that opportunity.
We are gonna have chances for votes, though, right?
If someone moves it.
Good evening to everyone. As I was sitting here listening to everyone's testimony, I felt compelled to come up here to speak. I was born and raised in Baltimore. I lived on, I grew up on the east side of town. I remember as a young boy, my father, he always wanted to start his own business in housing, you know, he was a carpenter. He never done it, but he always talked about it. And my father died, and he never accomplished that dream, but I, I, I felt compelled to step in his foot, footprints and, and fulfill it for him. As I came to this hearing, I walked by several homeless people, some young, young women laying on the streets, in the gutters, men and women, a lot of young women. I know, I thought I'd never see the day where I see young women laying on the curbs and in the gutters and no one caring. But that goes on in this city now, right around the corner from here. We have a program, we have a city that has thousands of vacant houses on the books. I mean, this is a no-brainer. We got people that's willing to work. A lot of these young kids are hopeless. You'd be surprised at the mindsets of some of them. A lot of them are very intelligent. I, I, I had no idea, I was, I was shocked at some of the intelligence that I found out in some of these young people that I encountered with. But I, I see a lot of problems in this city, but I see a lot of opportunities. And I don't look at the glass half-full, I mean, half-empty. I try to look at things half-full, I try to be optimistic. I just believe that all the answers and solutions are right there in front of us, we just have to reach for them. We have to come together as one. We are our brother's keeper, we have to help one another. If we spend half the time encouraging one another and lifting one another's up instead of beating them down, we could accomplish so much more. It's a shame that we have so many vacant houses in this city where there's opportunity where though they can be fixed up. It breaks my heart that I hear that we outsource some of these contracts to people that doesn't even live in these communities, they don't even live in this state, to be honest, when there's men and women that's here that's willing to work. I always believed in taking care of home first before we try to take care of somebody else. You know, help your people out first, help your cities, your citizens, your neighbors out first before you try to help other states out, other people. You know, we can, we can eliminate a whole lot of problems, the drug problem, the gang problem, the killing, the, the homelessness, the, the job, the joblessness, you know? If we just taking advantage of this one opportunity, we have so many vacant houses, we can take these houses and fix them up. Trust me, they can be fixed up. I'm a living proof of that because that's what I did. I've seen some houses that was, I didn't think it could be done, but when I first saw the light, I seen the light, and they can be fixed up. But if we keep kicking the can further and further down the road, Mother Nature does wonders to a house. Trust me, it would, it, it, the rain, the, the snow, it, it beats down a house. But if we take the initiative, we start this thing right now... But if we take the initiative, we start this thing right now, we could save a whole lot of houses. A whole lot of houses. But if we keep kicking the can down the road, then, you know, I mean, it's going to be impossible to fix up a lot of these houses. These kids are just looking for hope, and right now they don't see any hope in us. And that's a shame, because I feel like we failed them. And, you know, we just have to do the right thing. We have an opportunity ahead in front of us. We can show the state, the world, we can show the country that Baltimore cares about their people. We can do it, but we have to do it. We have to stop talking and start doing, and stop beating down one another, and start lifting one another up, and start encouraging one another. That's all I have to say. God bless all of you.
Thank you, God bless you too.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Gross, and I am a resident of Baltimore City. Have been in Baltimore City my entire life. And actually, we signed in on a sheet, so I don't know where it is, and we checked that we wanted to testify, so... But I'm here to say that I heard a lot of people talk about the Vacants to Value program. And from my knowledge, I was the very first homeowner to buy a property through Vacants to Value, not as a developer, but as a homeowner. And my experience was an awesome one. I did not have a problem with anyone at the city. My problem came with developers that I had to sue through D L L R to get things done. But the city was an awesome partner. And I want to say that Teresa, Nikki, and all of them in that disposition office have continued to be great partners in the process. Because my community is slated, being right next to Johns Hopkins, for development. So I saw Vacants to Value as an opportunity for people in the community to actually buy homes at low rates and rehab them, and not have to pay $200,000 or $300,000 when the developer came in. Unfortunately, a lot of my neighbors didn't choose to go into the Vacants to Value program when I did. So now I may be a little bit late because every house around there is gone. But if you had a Dollar House program, I would like to see that reenacted. I'd say we totally support it. I think we need to look at not only Vacants to Value houses, but also houses that go into receivership. Because that, those houses tend to be in a little bit better condition than Vacants to Value houses. So you have an opportunity for people who don't have a lot of money to rehab to buy a house if they can get a house that's in receivership. I think there are a lot of opportunities to tweak the Vacants to Value system, but it's not necessarily something that has to be disposed of. The other thing I want to say is, I know when my LDA was processed, it listed me as a developer, but I was not one because I was a homeowner. And there was something that I think definitely, Julie, that we can tweak a little bit. I don't know, it's been a while since I've purchased, but the timeframe. So if you have someone who's buying a home to live in it, they shouldn't be under the same time restrictions as someone who's a developer and has a whole lot of money to come in to rehab. So there are some tweaks that we can make to the LDA, the process, to make it more easy or more amenable to someone who wants to be a homeowner and not someone who wants to be a developer. And I have had, I've had, I've done it. So if there's anyone here who needs advice, trust me, I don't have friends at 417. So I'm surprised I'm even up here saying that, because every time they see an email from me, they just, like, oh, here's Cynthia again. But I am willing to help anyone through the process because it was an awesome process for me, and I got it done.
Thank you for sharing your experience as well as your insight. That's very helpful.
I'm going to read off my phone, just so you know.
Give us your name, please.
Okay, my name is Laura Bianca Pruitt. I am a resident in City Council District 12 and a student at Morgan State University in the City and Regional Planning Program. I completed my thesis in May 2017 titled "Helping the Last, the Least, and the Lost: Compassionate Planning for Baltimore's Unsheltered Homelessness." I interviewed and spent a lot of time getting to know the people that lived at the encampment on MLK from 2016 to March 2017. And in reality, almost no one wants to live outside, but they told me they felt unsafe in shelters and living in bandos, you know, the local term for abandoned houses. One family told me what it was like, living on a section of the third floor because it was the only part of the house that was habitable, and sharing that space with raccoons. The able-bodied people living in the encampment wanted to work and wondered why they can't help rehab some of the bandos. Most importantly, like every other human being, everyone wanted a place of their own to call home. Yes, Councilwoman, you are correct in saying that some houses are unsavable. Yet, I've looked at some of the houses available on the Vacants to Value website. The ones that are on the website, I went and visited them in person, and they're not even full shelves. The entire back of the house is out, and there's a tarp covering it. So, the bar for savable is much lower than we all think if houses missing a back exterior wall are on the list. There are so many houses and so many people ready to restore them with sweat equity because we love this city and we won't give up on it. Baltimore claims to be a housing-first city, yet there are so many hurdles in place in this, here, keeping people from housing. For instance, I know people who have been denied housing based on their credit score. It's ridiculous because credit scores mean nothing. I am an employed, middle-class resident that makes $54,000 a year and have a 520 credit score due to a rough period in my life. So speaking of which, I live in a very nice 1,000-foot square, 1,000-square-foot row home that I pay $995 a month for. And yet, I just told you I have a 520 credit score, so I know that my landlord didn't check it. And yet, there are brown and black Baltimoreans here paying $1,300 a month for a place that's falling apart. So how can that be? Is it because of their credit score and their skin color? Racism and redlining is alive and well here in 2017 Baltimore. The Dollar House program would be a great opportunity to help homeless people get their lives back together. It would help working people who are struggling to make rent in these dilapidated apartments that they're paying far too much money for, own a house of their own in their own neighborhoods. It's interesting that the city and the state can pretty much open up a checkbook for Seattle-based Amazon to do whatever they want. They won't even release the bid because it's the highest bid, and they don't want others to know what it is. But you can't do that for our own residents who love and care about this city and their homes in their established neighborhoods in West and East Baltimore, the heart of this city. Thank you.
I would like to say, your observation about some of the conditions of the houses are duly noted. I know of quite a few that have sat on the market for quite some time because of the conditions that you mentioned. So thank you for bringing that to the fore. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name.
Samya Rabkirkner. I have a condo in Mount Vernon, and I teach at Morgan State University in the School of Architecture and Planning. In my studios, we engage the Vacants to Value so that I can introduce the students to the whole idea of not looking for jobs, but be in the business of creating jobs. When they say, please give me a recommendation at their graduation, I said, no, I'm not going to give you a recommendation. I want you to go and fix Baltimore, and in the process, create jobs so that you can say that you're an architect in the 21st century in a city that's still thinking like 20th century. I think we need to change that. Baltimore is a city with 97,500 students, and we are looking for Amazon to provide 50,000 jobs? New York State is going to make tuition free. In the condition that once you avail the free tuition, you will live in New York for three years because they know in the 21st century, these young youth graduates are going to produce jobs. We don't have to look for Amazon and Sagamore to create jobs for us. We have the human power right here. We just need to create programs that are tailored to keep them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Erica Hamlet, long resident of Baltimore City. I currently reside in Howard County because I had two young black males whose life I was trying to save. And Baltimore City Public School was awful. I've heard several times tonight we speak about the uprising behind the death of Freddie Gray. Please understand that the youth that orchestrated the uprising through internet connection in a matter of about 24 hours to do something because they were so hurt and so devastated by, you take everything from them, you shut down the wrecks, you stop extracurricular activity after school, you stop the gym program. So now we have children who watch themselves being murdered, and then you ask them to be quiet. So the same bricks and rocks from the dilapidated houses that they pass every day trying to go to these schools that aren't teaching them anything is what they used during the riots for their voices to be heard. And now I've sat for about three hours and saw countless of people pour into not just one floor, but two floors, begging for the opportunity to make a change in this very community. And all I've heard is resistance. Well, what we can't do, what we won't do with the, well, the money we don't have, but this program, and the developers come in and they need... I'm from the Cherry Hill community. I have watched Under Armour come in and take over. This isn't something that just started overnight. This is something that has been going on for years. The same elementary school parking lot that I ran track on has now, is now, a new school is being built on that very parking lot. Not when I went to school there, not a new school in the 10, 15 years ago when my child was going to school. But now, all of a sudden, that these developers come in, there's a new school. Not just one school in Cherry Hill, two new schools, though. And please understand that this isn't just only happening in Cherry Hill. It's happening in Johns Hopkins also. The teacher that was just doing Ellen that got $25,000. He went all the way to Ellen to get $25,000, but the school that he teaches in is right a stone throw away from Johns Hopkins Hospital. That makes absolutely no sense. We will give these developers the opportunity to come in and build up as high as the sky, but we don't require them to give anything back to our community. We don't require them to hire the people to build these buildings. We don't require them to hire the people after the buildings are built, to give them jobs to feed their families. All we require is that they come in, they build up, they generate money, and then they push people out of the community. Of course, the resident rate is decreasing because developers are coming in and taking over everything, and us normal, regular, working-class people can't afford to feed our kids, put gas in our cars, and go to work every day, and find affordable housing. Affordable housing now in the county is usually an apartment, apartment building, where everybody that's low-income lives. Why is that? Why do we all have to be lumped in one category together? Why can't we be afforded the opportunity to own a home? Why can't our children be afforded the opportunity to go to these great schools? It's not fair that every time you turn around, you see and you hear that developers are giving the opportunities that we've been begging for tonight. Begging for, that everyone in this room has asked for the, just the opportunity. I've heard Mary Pat Cloak not asked, not one time, not two times, but three times, can we vote? And all I've heard the council say is, well, please understand that this is not a meeting for the deciding factor. What is it, then? You, our demands have been heard, the need, it's not even a demand, it's a need. This is a need. It is a need for people to have an opportunity to say, you matter. Not Sagamore matters, not Under Armour matters, you matter. You, every day, tax-paying, in this community, trying to make a difference, you matter. You matter enough for us to give you an opportunity to have a program that says, here, stay. Rebuild. Have generations of families that stay and rebuild. We won't be leaving if there's an opportunity for us to stay. Right now, what, like she said, what are you offering me to stay? Nothing. You're offering me nothing to stay. I tell my children all the time, in a minute, if Johns Hopkins could, they will put their community in a bubble and keep us all out. Yeah, yeah, and use government money to do it. So we've heard that Governor Hogan has given money to tear down these properties. Well, the same way he gave the money, there's no one to ask him for money to, so people can stay to build up these properties? Oh, okay, tear those down. But where are the people asking for money to help build them up? Now, let's not forget, I said, the same bricks and rocks that were used in the riots are from those vacant houses that have been sitting vacant for years. They're vacant, and you're saying that they can't be rebuilt because they're so dilapidated at this point? Why did it get to that point? Let's not come back here another 40, 50 years for the next generation begging for the same opportunity.
Absolutely. And ma'am, I'll say, your point is well-taken, especially thinking about how long this problem has persisted, and we don't want it to go on. Somebody?
So, we're done with public testimony? Mr. Chair, I move this resolution favorably.
All right.
Call for the vote.
Chairman Bullock?
Yes.
He was saying, we were going over the votes, and Councilman Schleifer is not here. He's out of the chambers.
Mr. Burnett?
Yeah.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Number Sneed?
Yes.
Number Sneed votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Dorsey?
Dorsey's out.
Mr. Dorsey votes cede.
Mr. Dorsey is absent, but he was also here for roll call. So, the chair had five votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We could go to second reader at the next meeting if that's the desire of the chair.
All right.
Well, now the vote's been taken. I want to just thank everyone who came out tonight. It's been a long night for all of us, but the fact that you came out to hear, you have your voices be heard, means a whole lot. The spirit of Baltimore is truly alive tonight. Also, I want to thank our city agencies who stuck out for us, and also the members of this committee and all the staff. Thank you and have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.